Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the October 19th, 2020 Select Board Meeting. This is our first meeting in two weeks as we enjoyed a week away for the holiday. This evening's agenda is full, and we will start with a coronavirus community update, as always, from our Board Chief, McCassie. What on up, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I will be quick because I know that you have a scheduled hearing on your agenda this evening.
We don't like to rush things, though.
I know.
This is important business.
All the news that's fit to present.
Indeed.
So it has been two weeks since I was before the board. During that time, we had gone from being a red community to being a yellow community and back to being a red community. We currently have 120 cases. So in the intervening time since our last meeting, we did go over the 100 mark. We currently have 104 recovered. We have two COVID-related fatalities, and we still have 14 active cases. Of those 14 active cases, three are co-located at a single apartment, two are co-located at a single-family home, and then nine others are individual cases at single-family homes throughout town. We are very fortunate that by last Thursday, all cases associated with our elderly housing complex had resolved, and by Friday, all cases associated with our long-term care facility had also recovered. So based on my estimates and the calculations based on the information I have from our Health Department Nursing Consultant, there were 14 cases during the reporting period between October 4th and October 17th, which will be the basis of this Wednesday's risk designation. So that's all I have in terms of the quick community update.
Mr. Sparrow, any questions on that?
Just a quick one. Have we resolved the difference between the local numbers and the state numbers?
I believe that we're within two.
Okay.
As of the clearance of the cases associated with the long-term care facility, I believe we found the majority of the discrepancy. We also found a discrepancy associated with the elderly housing complex. So we'll know on Wednesday.
Was it related to like an employee who was in Holliston but didn't reside? It wasn't? Okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
The yo-yoing between the red and the yellow?
Yes.
Is exhausting to stay on top of, I am sure.
Yes.
Is there significance for the town of Holliston, for any department, for any group, for any board or committee in terms of looking at planning or changes when we go from red to yellow to red to yellow? Is that significant, or is this just a hold steady?
The most significant impact would be for our colleagues at the schools because a lot of the DESI guidance uses the DPH risk designation as one of the metrics by which they determine the learning model that they'll be utilizing. It also would have an impact in some regards for sports teams.
Okay.
Associated with the school.
Yep.
Because there are some that won't send their athletes to a red community.
Okay.
Because that's just their policy. And so three weeks ago, we were able to explain the majority of our risk designation is associated with an elderly housing complex and a long-term care facility, and schools were then more comfortable sending their athletes to a red community.
Okay.
Now that all of our cases are associated with residential outside the high-risk population, that could be more of a concern. I've been in very close contact with the school officials, both administration as well as the elected officials. I've been to several, been to several school committee meetings via Zoom to discuss the risk designation and what it means and how our numbers are achieved. And to that end, the report that I normally generate on Wednesday evenings for the board, and then more recently, I've also been providing sort of an executive summary for the school personnel, it's our intention now for me to be publishing a public version of that by Thursday morning. I will push to always get my information to the board to whom I report, as well as to our partners at the school for Wednesday evening. But in terms of the public-facing executive summary of DPH numbers, what they mean, and you know, a deeper dive at those numbers, it's my commitment to push that out on Thursdays.
Okay, but in the end, this back and forth between red and yellow, if it's not consistent in one, in the red?
Yes.
For, I believe it's three weeks.
Correct.
It does not change any decision that the schools are going to take because if they're following DESI, and I mean to say that.
Correct.
Any school following DESI guidelines.
Yes.
Is going to be looking for a designation of red over a period of.
For three consecutive weeks.
Right.
And also associated in terms of not necessarily municipal departments, but for industry in our community, as we talked a few weeks ago, when a lot of the Commonwealth went to step two of phase three.
Yeah.
Or phase two of step three, I should say, we weren't able to because we'd been red within the last three weeks. Because we've still been red within the last three weeks. We are not advancing to that next phase.
Well, so when I talk about yo-yoing between the two designations, that means you're also yo-yoing between reacting to, and I guess my statement of support for you would be to preserve yourself, to not get caught up in churn over red, yellow, red, yellow, because it does not have implications in terms of critical decisions if you're following the DESI guidelines.
Correct. And other municipal departments, our first responders are still using appropriate PPE, one either through knowing the address of the PSAP location or through pre-arrival screening by our call takers, we're donning the appropriate PPE. So none of that's going to change whether we're red, yellow, green, or gray.
Right.
So a lot of it is the emotional frenzy that comes with that designation.
Yeah.
And all the flutter that occurs on social media.
Right.
As the community reacts to it, and then we have to manage the community's response. That's more of the yo-yo effect that's impacting me than even, you know, working with the decision-makers at the schools, whether it's administrators or elected officials. I tend to be the remain calm, all is well, I can explain the numbers to you, and they are very responsive to that. We can't always control social media.
Fair enough. Then I guess I would point out to the audience and the residents that you have two critical jobs ahead of you, which is preparing for town election and then preparing for town meeting. And so your ability to focus and get your work done for those two very important public events is, I think, important to me on this board. And so I hope, well, I mean, what can you say about social media except I want to get over the best and pray for calm and, yeah, I see the back and forth. But okay, that's all. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm glad you brought that up, Tina. I was going to bring that up to you, Mike, as well in a different form. I was going to ask you, is the job of emergency manager weighing on you? Do you feel the cumulative effect of seven months of this role at any time being detrimental to what you're trying to get done?
That's an excellent question. Thank you. I don't feel that it weighs on me. When we first started with this operational period back in March, I was very much jazzed up and would explain to people, this is what I've trained for. I mean, I've got over 20 years of training as an emergency manager, as a first responder. I've taught emergency management at the master's level. This is something that I'm wired this way. It energizes me. Are there times during the seven months where it has gotten to be weary? Absolutely. But with any extended operation, that's always the case. But I'm very focused on self-care. I try to take some time to recharge as best I can while still focusing on what needs to be focused on. But no, I don't think it's detracting from my other operations. We're still putting fires out. I hear sirens in the background. We're still going to emergencies. Everybody's getting the care that they need.
Obviously, with the return to school, heightened level of anxiety, hopefully the community can start to find its level now that schools resumed and we endure what, you know, the pandemic is doing to us over the next several months. You've heard me speak so glowingly of my personal appreciation for the work you've done. You've made it for so, made it easy for so many other stakeholders in this town to do their work, make difficult decisions, live with a whole new world of conducting business from a public management perspective. I can't say enough good things about the work you've done, and I want you to know through me and I think the board, you have our full support every day for what you're doing. And certainly, if you encounter any of the kinds of pushback that Ms. Hein is alluding to, either electronic or otherwise, we'd like to know about it because I think the community has to understand that we're all in this together, and that means we have to be rational and reasonable. No one's better at that than you. So please accept my thanks again and my deepest appreciation for all the work you continue to do, and know that you've got our full support to keep doing it, Mike.
Thank you.
The other point I wanted to make before we move on is, you touched on it. I was contacted by the Chair of the School Committee last week, who had an interest in expanding that narrative that you ably produce for us each week. And as you pointed out, they'll start seeing it now on the town website. Maybe you can talk about that in a second where it will be found. But essentially, for the community to understand, Mike summarizes the activities at kind of a ground level, little macro, but it's good information. It gives the reader an understanding of the trends, what's happening with the cases within the town, what kind of activities you're undertaking in that week so that they understand what you're doing. That will be part of now a public-facing message that folks across the town can read and understand with some degree of specificity going forward. Talk a little bit about where they can find it, Mike.
Thank you. So that will be on our coronavirus update page, which is where they find all of the updates every time we have an additional case, every time we have a case that rolls off, plus the weekly reports that we're publishing on Mondays. That's also where they have found messages from the superintendent. That is where they have found the situation status reports from the coronavirus command center at the state level. So it all appears chronologically. So that will just be posted on Thursday morning along with every other update that they can see. So they'll always be able, at the top of the page will be the most recent information, and that's where we'll publish that update.
I have a question, maybe leaning towards you, Travis, because we had this conversation last week. But Mike, in the event that the virus's impact in our community, you know, resulted in some kind of an extreme decision, a sporadic, you know, closure of X, whether it's a public building or whatever, how do you communicate that? In the past, I've heard you talked about Blackboard and so forth. Is there a means by which we could accelerate or broaden the messaging for emergency management decisions? If people are going to the websites, because they have a few minutes to click and read up if they're curious about what's going on, but if there was something that had to be pushed to them and then find details on website, is this where sort of a, not an embellish, but a enhanced town social media presence, Travis, would help, i.e. Twitter or some other push social media for people to see chief is calling for blank, 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 or closure of blank, 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 or, you know, we, whatever? We haven't talked about that. We've used Blackboard.
Right.
But what do you think?
So it's a tool in the toolbox, and anytime I have the opportunity on social media, when a question is posed, I tend to embed the link to the page on the website to try and train the public to, instead of looking to social media for the answer, be looking to the authoritative town website for the answer. For things like, is trash delayed this week? Or what are the hours for the recycling center this weekend? So I always try to point people to the website. We don't have a lot of followers on the town's Facebook page. Ms. Hein has a, I believe she probably has more followers on her page than the town does on theirs. It might be close. Honestly, I think our partnership with folks like the hyperlocals such as Holliston Reporter are invaluable because they've got the banner across their page and the number of click-throughs that they get on a daily basis. And when there's updated and urgent information, they're very good about getting that information out, and they do also point people to the town website.
Town does not have a Twitter account, does it?
We do not.
Holliston PD has a Twitter account, don't they?
They have a Twitter as well as a Facebook, as well as an Instagram.
They have over 2,000 followers.
Yes.
So they effectively push emergency or, you know, public safety messages. I'm questioning, can we replicate that or this design when you find that?
I think it would be more effective for us to ask them to post content, which is what we've done in the past. When there's been something of a pressing nature, we ask them to push it out, and they're very good about doing that. So rather than trying to get additional followers.
They being the hyperlocals?
No, they being the police.
Okay.
When we say, can you make sure to put this up on social? They do, and they get click-throughs, and a lot of people see that. So we already have that as part of our messaging plan.
Okay. Any other questions on the coronavirus update? Anybody on the Zoom call, questions for the chief?
I did have one other question.
Go ahead, Dan.
We were sort of talking about Halloween. Have we, what has the Board of Health mentioned? Or certainly, we can't tell people what they can and can't do, but what is the guidance that the Board of Health is giving to residents about Halloween?
The position that the Board of Health has taken, and this was posted to the town website.
Yes.
Is we are encouraging families to celebrate and observe the holiday using lower-risk activities. I will state emphatically here, as I have done on the school committee Zoom and other locations, that traditional trick-or-treating, going door-to-door, especially with people you may not know, is a higher-risk activity. And whether we are still on the red or whether we've drifted back to the yellow that week, it would not be advisable for folks to be trick-or-treating. There are alternatives that they can do to celebrate the holiday, and those are linked on the town's website, Board of Health post, as well as on our coronavirus page.
Okay.
And that links to the CDC guidance and to the DPH guidance, which is really encouraging them to do alternatives. It may not be the Halloween that we've traditionally done. It may not be what we'd like to do, but this is really a year of sacrifices, and we need to do that for the greater good. Because the ability to have a super-spreader event by folks congregating, participating in Halloween activities in some of the larger neighborhoods where, I mean, I grew up in this town. I know that there are certain neighborhoods where folks drive their children to and drop them off, and there are sections of town where large packs of people go door-to-door and hit probably 75 to 100 homes. And that just is not a safe option this year. So the position that the board has taken is, the board is not recommending that we cancel Halloween, and that's consistent with what Governor Baker has said, that's consistent with what the State Department of Public Health has said. Because there are a lot of boards of health out there, they're asking the state, will you just cancel Halloween? And the state says, we're not going to touch that third rail. And I can understand the state's position because there are 351 cities and towns, and there are some communities that have been gray since the map was first published and have never left the gray. And for them to significantly alter the way they celebrate Halloween because some other urban communities are in the red and have been in the red, it doesn't make sense. So it's each community is, it's up to them. The school has been great, and they are trying to enhance their messaging and remind folks. And they took a pretty hard line the other night when we discussed this, and their position was, their messaging to parents is going to be, really, you have the power that you can either let your child trick-or-treat and get a lot of candy, or you can keep the schools open. Because by doing Halloween like we've always done Halloween, we risk possibly not being able to remain in-person learning.
Uh huh.
So, long answer to a very difficult question.
Understood, understood. Thank you for that information. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, Chief, let's move on to the CARES Act program update.
So first program update that I would want to circle back to is, a couple of weeks ago, you'd asked about cameras and election security.
Yes.
And I can tell you that the town clerk recently met with the police chief and other stakeholders on a election security meeting, and so they did review not only the in-person, but the early voting and the box out back and what this looks like. I did review with our technology director where we have cameras and what the cameras are focused on. And without getting into specifics, because I don't want to publish our security plan here in the building, we do have good coverage of all of the areas.
Satisfactory, in other words.
Yes. So if anyone is headed towards or from the vault areas, they will be captured on camera. So I'm very comfortable that we don't need any additional equipment.
That's perfect. Any questions on that?
Nope, sounds great.
Great.
And secondly, I'm very pleased that the report came in from the Youth and Family Services Director, updating us on the rent and mortgage relief that had been available. Just a reminder to the public, those applications went in through Youth and Family Services to their advisory board, and then the funds were administered and paid out through the Holliston Community Action Fund, which is administered by the Holliston Business Association. With that round of funding, we were able to help nine families, which was a total of 28 individuals. And in the aggregate, the $22,247 of assistance that was paid out covered a total of 14 months' worth of rent or mortgage for, you know, in the totality for those nine families. That $22,000 was less than the $36,000 that had been asked for by those families. So some got the full amount that they requested, others, for programmatic reasons, their disbursement was lower. They may have only gotten one month if they asked for three. But, and also additionally, they were made aware of some utilities requests, which the Community Action Fund was able to help, independent of our funding. And so I'm really pleased that we were able to help people in our community. And what we would ask the board to consider, not looking for you to commit to this tonight, is based on the success of the program and how quickly it was subscribed to, whether or not you would be interested in opening up a second round of funding between now and the end of the calendar year.
Is there a sense from our friends at Youth and Family what that demand might look like? Do they have applicants in need? Do we have any peek into that?
They believe that there would be more families that would be asking for assistance. And the other thing that the board could consider is whether or not the board would want to lower the threshold of the total dollar amount each family was eligible for. So instead of helping nine families, maybe they'd be able to open, help 15 if they had a lower cap on the total amount to be distributed. But again, just want to put it on your radar. We've got time to figure this out, but I was really pleased and very happy they were able to, you know, from the time that we finally got the mechanics of, we authorized the appropriation, we were able to figure out the mechanism, we were able to work out the agreement for them to administer the program with no overhead costs, and they were able to get that money out to families pretty quickly. And it was really gratifying to see us do that.
Your liaison, right?
Yep.
Would it make sense to, through Ms. Hein, ask Youth and Family for a recommendation for additional funds to the board based on, as Chief said, the interest in the program going forward through the end of the year?
Absolutely. I think Jackie Warner would have been one of those tonight, but they're actually meeting this evening. So we could also bring them back. But I can go through, Ms. Hein?
Yeah, I spoke to Jackie about this, our director. And at that time, I think that she shared what's here in this report, so I don't think there's been any new information since my conversation with her. And I asked her whether or not she'd be looking for a second round of funding, and her answer at that time was yes. So I can certainly have her reach out to you and present that request.
I would just point out one other thing. I think since the last time we had this conversation as a group, one of the conversations was sort of having an agreement between the town and the third party, the fiduciary, which is the CAF. And so that was put in place before the $25,000 was transferred, and as the chief said, everything is going very smoothly, and I appreciate the effort of the CAF and Youth and Family Services.
And another development is, the state has also implemented some additional relief efforts in recent weeks. I know several of us were able to be on a Zoom call last week where the state was sharing some of those programs that are available. So the good thing is, even if someone were to come to Youth and Family Services during round two, and if they weren't eligible for our assistance, there are a couple more tools in the toolbox that Youth and Family or Community Action Fund might be able to point folks to. So even if it's not Holliston administered CARES funds through Community Action Fund, we might be able to direct them to a state program where they may be eligible for certain other benefits.
I think that's great.
Yes.
Great update. So through you.
I'll reach out to Jackie tomorrow.
An update, I think, would be great.
Great.
And you can also.
That is all I have for these two items.
Do you want to just update on the unemployment? Do you want to save that?
Yeah, so as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago on one of the Zoom calls with the round two of the CARES Act, which we are not eligible for any additional funding through round two because we took our full $1,317,137 that we received back in June. But they have expanded and clearly stated through A&amp;F guidance, three additional lines that are eligible for the use, and one of those is unemployment charges. So we are keeping an eye on what our unemployment liability is so that we can be thinking to between now and December if we do a journal entry to cover some coronavirus-related unemployment claims. And that would be allowable under the program.
If you, if I had to put you on the spot right now, Mike, if you had to guess what the balance, or the remaining balance of funds from that CARES Act appropriation to the town would be, what are we talking about?
So right now, we've expended on unemployment line $100,000 of a total appropriation of 100,000 plus a transfer forward of 100,000. So about 50% of the available funds to cover unemployment this year, as we knew it was going to be an issue. I would just mention that within that substantial amount of what we're looking at has to do with fraudulent claims, and we are battling our way through that, as is everybody else. We are still confident that those fraudulent claims have nothing to do with the security breach of our information. It's pretty widespread. One thing that Mary Buskett was able to do through our friends at the State House was sort of make sure that we got access to, make sure the information, the fraudulent claims are going to the right place. So we at least have that getting to the right place. Because at the moment, the state has sort of been overwhelmed by that and not allowed people really to go through the normal process they would to challenge unemployment claims. But we just want to make sure that our fraudulent claims have definitely gone to the right place.
If I understand correctly, the CARES Act could be used to offset unemployment claims, could it not? So right now, those expenses are sitting on the town's ledger? So if we inch towards December and see some opportunity, we could move those obligations off of ours to the states? You thinking the same thing?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on that one? We increased the budget for unemployment insurance with our July town meeting.
We did.
Would we look to include that as well?
So at this point, regardless, outside of, in addition to that increase that we had in the budget, we're tracking to be substantially over.
Yep, right.
So I guess I don't understand the question.
If I could inject.
Go for it.
With the permission of the Chair, the stipulations for use of the CARES funding is that it could not have been budgeted as of March. So even if we increased our budget at the July 20 annual town meeting, that was not budgeted as of March.
I know, and if I remember correctly, the conversation when we made that decision in, for July 20th, was related to the unexpected, the anticipated but unknown, as yet unknown, unemployment insurance related to the pandemic. So that's what I'm wondering, is whether or not that additional 50,000 that was moved into that budget for the war in July could be captured and pulled out with money from the CARES Act? So instead of what you have here, add an additional 50,000 to bring us back to essentially what was our FY '20 unemployment insurance?
I'd love to take a look.
Good. Just one quick thing. So we have the $1,317,000. We have about $450,000 remaining that we have not allocated to this time. Have we put together a plan on what we're doing with that money? Or have we reached out to departments to say, hey, could you get in anything before December 31st? Because I think our goal would be to spend the $1,317,000.
Oh, absolutely.
137,000.
And we've had conversations with the school department because obviously, there are multiple sources of CARES funding that they have. Some are direct formula grants, some are other targeted funds, and then they've also been able to access what's available through your board. So as we try to minimize the impact on the town's books, there certainly could be, if it comes down to December 28th and we still haven't completely utilized everything on our spreadsheet, there would be opportunity for us to possibly shift some expenses that were incurred by the schools that haven't come out of one of their buckets towards our fund so that we don't have to give anything back to A&amp;F.
And then an adjunct to that would be, are there anything, are there any particular programs that are expiring on December 31st that we should look into for the second half of the year? Like, are there particular, you know, positions? Like are there particular, you know, positions or things like that that we've, I mean, and I can think of some.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that, especially with a December town meeting, is there potential that we need to do some work there?
So I think specifically of the crossing guard, temporary crossing guard that was approved a few weeks ago. That's on a pilot program through the end of December. And so obviously, we would evaluate that to determine whether that was something that should move forward post-January with funding from local sources. And obviously, there's been a lot of temporary hiring that's been happening up the hill that the funds aren't there for afterwards as well. So that's a larger holistic town look.
Technology assistant.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the, that was the main one that I was thinking about. I'm just thinking like with a December town meeting, are there some things that we need to do potentially at that?
Oh, and that absolutely, you could, you could very easily make a case for the technology assistant because the number, and even if it gets to the point where restrictions are lifted and more boards and committees can meet in person, I think a lot of boards and committees have found the benefit of being able to meet remotely. And especially with some of the hot topic agenda items, it's a lot easier, I mean, it's, it's a burden for technology, but it's easier to manage a crowd of 85 to 115 people on a Zoom call.
Yeah.
Than it is to try and pack them into this room or the.
Just provided, yeah. Yeah, that's a longer conversation. But I just want to make sure that we have that stuff on the, on the radar so that we were thinking about it sooner because this is going to creep up on us quickly.
Right. And the other thing is some of the subscriptions and the expenses for our DSCI phone lines, which are metered minutes, those obviously go higher the more meetings we have as well.
Okay.
So just a quick follow-up. It's a great point by Ben. I recall after we spoke, Travis, with our legislators, I'd asked the question, what can we do? And the answer was, you know, right in Congress, in this case Congressman Clark, right to the delegation and again asked for the extension of funding to go beyond 1231. Could we ask you to draft a letter? There's, there's one already in the file that we did back in June.
July. We signed it July 20th.
Signed it on my first day, I remember. And I spoke to Congresswoman Clark's office probably two weeks ago just to make sure that that was being worked on, but I can follow up as well.
So I think, while I think Ben brings in a great question about looming expiring obligations, spending is one avenue. The other avenue is planning. The planning piece comes in through possible opportunity to extend the deadline to do that. I personally have no expectation that the emergency order for what we're under right now will expire by the end of the calendar year. So I'm optimistically thinking that Congress will see the benefit of enabling that funding to go forward for at least another six months. And in that case, I wouldn't think that spending it all would be a great idea, but planning that money.
Well, yeah. I mean, we need to have some sort of a mechanism. And then we could, if there needs, if there is additional funding, then as we, you know, we've talked about, we could recode and re-report depending on how, if, they would probably use the same mechanism as before.
And with regards to the planning, we can once again bring it up at our next department head meeting and remind department heads that the funds are available within the restrictions of Attachment A plus the three new categories that have been established to ensure that if anybody has any needs to work them through the proper channel, we've got the flow chart that tells them how to seek approval. And I continue to say no to some requests and other ones that I think will pass muster, we bring to the board. Do you have the questions?
No, I just want to point out that it looks like we have Jackie Weiner on the call.
Yes. Jackie, how are you? Jackie? There you go.
Hi. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Bouncing to board meetings tonight.
Very briefly, Jackie, thanks. We're just wrapping up with Chief Cassidy. But before we move on, Tina, if you just wanted to fill her in on what actionable item we want to take for Youth and Family Services.
So thank you for your report and the good work that you've done. It's, it's very good news to hear how successful the program, the rent and mortgage relief program, has been. Our question for you is if you are ready to make a request of this board for a second round of funding to the tune of $25,000. And if yes, what would you do differently? Do you need direction from this board to change the program in any way, shape, or form in terms of the dollar amount, the cap of some sort for the requests that are coming in that can be approved?
Yeah, so thank you, Tina, and to members of the select board for allocating the first round of funding. It was incredibly successful. We had nine families come forward seeking rent and mortgage relief. And we were very happy with how that money was used. In particular, we had one family who was already in an eviction process. And if you're following, everything was going on the news. The moratorium was lifted on Saturday on rent and on eviction. And so that felt like we could rest easy this weekend, knowing that a family was not going to be removed from their home. And so it's incredibly important to continue this. There is such a great need in the community for it. If we were to do this again, we would amend the guideline to be for one month at a time, which would drop the maximum amount from 5,000 that a person could receive down to 2,000. And those guidelines will go back up on our website as soon as funding becomes available to reflect the need that's out there so that we can get to more people and help more people who are in need.
Okay, thank you.
So I think, Jackie, if you could turn around your recommendation and writing three liaisons to Travis, we'll try to take that up as early as next week so that we don't delay any action to allow your board, your, your, your group to help these families, okay?
Sure.
All right. Thanks for joining us. You would get in right under the gun there. Mike was just wrapping up. Anything else?
I'm great, thank you.
Questions for Jackie?
Thanks, Jackie.
Are you good here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mike, thanks so much.
Great.
Good night, Jackie. We're going to move on to warrants.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, do you want to take five out of order as they're here and we listed 730?
Sure, I will.
Okay.
Let me open up the hearing first, okay? Ben, do you have the notice of hearing for this?
Yes.
If you'd be so kind, we're going to take out of order Agenda Item Number Five, which in this case is a public hearing, change of address for 360 Motorsports LLC. Good evening, gentlemen, how are you? Our clerk, Ben Sparrow, will read and open our hearing.
Sure. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Holliston, looking into a used car dealer's license Class II to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140 of the General Laws with amendments thereto, 360 Motorsports LLC, Martin John Garvey, is hereby licensed to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles at 275 Hopping Brook Road, Holliston, Massachusetts 01746.
The hearing is now open. Ms. Heine is getting contacted. How are you? Good evening. Him, okay. What's your name, sir? If you can give us your name and address, we'll.
I'm Martin Garvey. My personal address.
And you are, are you the manager of the Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer License?
Yes.
Okay. And tell us a little bit about your business and what's going on up there at 275 Hopping Brook Road.
Buy and sell vehicles that are typically under 10,000, sell a lot of first cars to kids, parents come down by relatively affordable, hopefully high-quality vehicles. And recently purchased a building on Jeffrey Ave., so I want to move the license to Jeffrey Ave.
How many vehicles do you currently have on the lot up at Hopping Brook? Will that change when you get to Jeffrey Ave.?
It could possibly change because it's a much bigger facility.
Give numbers.
I would say I typically have not had more than 25 at a time.
Probably quite a bit less than that.
Yeah.
And you'd be going up to more than that?
I'm not sure that I would be able to go up to that at the moment, but I would like to.
Scale up, yeah.
I'd like to scale up.
Do you do anything else besides sell cars?
Nope.
You go. Ben, any questions for the applicant?
The only thing that I've seen in the information is, is our building inspector was asking about permitting for work being done there. And I just wanted to check in. I mean, this, this could be dated information. I just wanted to check in to see if you.
We got the building permit today.
Got the permit today.
Today. You got the building permit today?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, the building permit's been issued, the occupancy permit has not been issued yet.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
The building permit we got today.
Okay.
And we should have most of the construction done within a week because there's really not much.
Okay.
And then we'll be asking that Chris or whoever takes Chris' place come down.
Yep.
Probably within a week.
Okay. Anything else? That's it.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So can you tell us about your decision to move from Hopping Brook down to the Lowland Industrial Park? It sounds like growth is a part of it. It's a bigger space, it allows you to grow. What else? Were there any other factors in moving?
A big factor was renting versus owning the property.
Okay.
So being able to not rent is, is huge.
And that wasn't an option for you?
How long you been in Hopping Brook?
Five years.
Excellent.
Will you be storing your vehicles inside, outside, both?
Both.
And then your website here has you already listed at 72 Jeffrey Ave. This is 360 Motorsports, what is Carvalt?
That's me.
Carvalt is his business as well.
Jack, I'm his father.
Oh, okay.
And I own the Carvalt, which is up on kind of Home Drive.
Okay.
And we purchased the building at 72 Jeffrey. And at some point, I'll also be making the same request to move the Carvalt down. It just, we were paying so much rent, we could buy a building for the same money. So why not?
Why not?
So it'll be 360 Motorsports that's operating once you get your occupancy permit?
Yes, and then the Carvalt.
At some point, I'll ask about the Carvalt. Are we allowed to have? I guess that's not a question for right now.
Correct. Yeah, it's a separate application.
Yeah.
So on your website, so it's again, 360 Motorsports, you're listed at 72 Jeffrey Ave. Are you operating out of 72 Jeffrey Ave. at this point?
Yes.
Okay. And then what are your hours of operation down at 72 Jeffrey Ave.?
Typically nine to six.
Okay. And was there any public meeting in which the, either the planning board or the zoning board had an opportunity to look at the hours of operation and weigh in on that? I know that there's no special permit here. By right, you're allowed to operate a warehouse and sell vehicles and store and so on. But was there any public process outside of this meeting where you had feedback on or had public comment on the hours of operation and also the storage inside or outside, rather?
We have classified as a showroom for keeping vehicles inside. And then as far as the hours go, I never had to meet with anybody on that before. The state, when I got my dealer plate, said that I have to have the hours posted on the front door. So I had posted them.
Okay.
At the old location from nine to six.
Okay. So I, I mean, I do have a concern, John and Ben. This is a new business in the industrial park. There's no other business down in Lowland that is selling vehicles, to my knowledge. This is a first time. We know that we have concerns from Abutters, residential areas, and so on. But we also know that there are just fundamental issues with traffic in and out of the industrial park and that hours of operation matter greatly to, we've heard this from, from people who've spoken up with general concerns about the industrial park. So I'd like the board to consider continuance on the public hearing to get more feedback and understand a little bit more about the process. I'm just not familiar with another business in the industrial park that's working until 6:00 PM. So I feel like that needs another level of review. That's one concern. Another is growing the business, which is great, but then access to, because car carriers in and out of the industrial park in the past for other businesses have triggered traffic studies and.
We don't do car carriers.
We don't use car carriers at all.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know this information? This is the first time I'm hearing this.
We don't use car carriers. We don't have tow trucks.
Sure, okay.
We just drive them in one at a time.
Okay. And then the other question I have is that the conditions for approval for the land disturbance and stormwater permit require that stamped engineering plans are submitted before you have occupancy. So I'm curious, I'd like to know more about that, how you're occupied, how you're operating out of the site, if you have satisfied all four conditions on the land disturbance and stormwater permit.
As far as I know, that's all set?
Yeah, we did, we did submit the stamped engineer drawings. The building department has them.
Okay.
And I believe everything, everything they've told us that.
Would they require those for the permit?
Yes.
That's as it's listed, yeah.
So let's, let's give the applicant an idea of what, what you envision, in this case, more public input. How would you, how would you like to achieve that? Are we going to push them back to the planning board? Do you see more public input via this hearing? You want to have an opportunity to hear from residents?
I'm not, I'm not even sure. I mean, the Butters were notified within the industrial park. That was a part of the process to move forward for the building permit. So I think that's been satisfied.
Okay.
However, I think it's the hours of operation and the outdoor storage, but more so the hours of operation, that's the one that really stands out to me because this is a new type of business within the industrial park. And we don't review hours of operation. That is not something that this board does. So that's, that's the one issue that I think deserves just a little bit more review.
Mr. Hearn, where do the hours of operation for a building or an operation like this come from? Where do they emanate from?
So again, as Ms. Heine mentioned, I didn't go through a site plan review because it's a use allowed by right. So I don't know that we have anything to trigger to send it to the planning board. That's my concern for that.
Okay.
I know that, you know, during the special permitting process, they certainly get into hours of operation, but nothing here would have triggered that conversation.
Right.
And I don't know that I have anywhere to send them for that conversation other than discussing it here with you, if you wanted to continue it and bring them back to have that conversation. At the same time, I did check in with the building inspector, Chris Canny, who confirmed that the building permit was issued, just reiterated that the use is allowed by right and that the drainage structures and things had been moved to his request based on the permit that I sent earlier. And then I spoke with Karen Sherman as well, who essentially said the same thing, which is that, you know, the, the building inspector and her worked on that stormwater permit. And at this point, you know, the occupancy permit is, is based on the completion of those things.
Got it. So Tina, it sounds like if we do anything, you just need some more time to work on your concerns.
I think so. Yeah, I hope that's not asking too much, but yes, that would be what I'm saying.
Is it a week, okay?
Yeah, yes.
What kind of position does that put you in if we were to continue this hearing until next week?
The same one I'm already in, so it's all right.
Why don't we do that? Mr. Clerk, we're going to continue the hearing.
Okay.
Until Monday, October 26th.
Okay.
Time to be arranged through the agenda in Mr. Hearn's office. Hopefully, we'll wrap this up next week. This time, we'll have some opportunities to clarify some questions and issues, which may be reaching out to directly.
Okay.
To the extent you can cooperate with the board, that's always a great idea.
Sure.
Thanks for your patience, I appreciate it.
So do you want to vote to continue the meeting or is it just the chair's direction?
I would appreciate a vote to continue and then a vote to close the public hearing.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Sparrow?
I will, I will make a motion to continue this hearing.
Until?
Until next week.
Monday, October 26th. So have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We do not close the hearing. All right, we leave it open?
We can leave it open until next week, sure.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming in, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good to see you next week.
See you next week.
Back on track, Travis?
Yes, so sorry, back to three and then four.
All right. Warrants. Done. Okay.
We have one warrant in the amount of $1 million. I'll make a motion to approve the warrant in the amount of $1,151,944.89. Of that, $131,873.56 is town payroll.
I have a motion, do we start?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Thanks, Ben. Public comment, Mr. Sparrow?
One second. I have a couple of things. First is, I said it in the last meeting, I'm going to say it again, probably keep saying it. Fall curbside pickup will be, Yell Harvey will be picking up leaves at curbside the week of November 30th, 2020. All leaves must be in compostable bags or loose in trash barrels. Plastic bags will not be accepted. All leaves must be at curbside by 6:00 AM on your designated trash pickup day. Any questions, please call the select board's office. And there's that one. And the second one is, starting November 1st, 2020, there is no on-street parking between 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM until March 31st, 2021. And then the only other thing I would mention is to remind people that early voting is starting. I'm not sure if someone else is going to say that, but I'll say it anyway. And it's, so there's early voting at the top of the town hall through, I believe it is the 30th.
Yes.
And...
If you don't vote by the 30th, you're going to the high school.
And if yes, if you're not there by then, you're going to the high school on the 3rd.
There you go.
And the hours of operation are town hall hours, except on the weekends, which they are, I believe it is eight to one and nine to one. And more information is on the town website if you, it's on the front page of the town website if you need to find out more.
Nine to one on the weekends, yes.
Nine to one on the weekends, so.
Good.
I'm good.
Tina?
I do not have any other public comment, but I will add to Ben's comment. Saturday, October 24th is the last day, it's the deadline to register to vote, so it's not too late.
Very good. That is all?
Yes.
I have no public comment? We'll move to comments from the town administrator.
Well, on that theme, let me just add one thing from the clerk's office, which is we've had some people who requested the mail-in vote and then have decided to come in for early voting with the idea that they'd like to do it in person, which is fine, but please bring in your mail-in ballot. And also, for those who are of the mindset that they want to come in because they want to see it go into the machine, that is also not part of the early voting process. If you want to see it go into the machine, you're doing that at the high school on the 3rd. You can certainly, even if you get it in the mail, you can come to town hall and do in-person voting, but just bring with you what you received in the mail. Thank you very much. And now, moving off of that topic. And since we just had some individuals in here talking about going through the building inspector process, I just wanted to let the community know that we have selected through a process that included our land use staff, myself, and the fire chief, a candidate that we will bring to meet the board next week. He is, he will be coming in person to meet you all. His name is Mark Caffeline. He is currently the building inspector for the town of Douglas. And we have stolen him away from them. So he will be coming in front of you all next week. If you have any questions for him, obviously that would be a good time, but also to meet and greet and show him off to the community. At the same point, as these individuals were saying, that they just received something from Chris Canny. Chris is still working. He's giving us about 20 hours a week as he can to keep things moving downstairs. If you are experiencing delays, we are trying to keep up with demand. It has been a big demand on the building department as people are home through COVID and doing lots of home projects. But we are excited to potentially have a new body in here full-time, 40 hours a week, once we can get this individual in. And again, I'll have him for you next meeting.
Will they bring an overlap period where the two of them are working?
Yes. So one of the things is that as this board will end up appointing, part of the ability for Mark to become the person who signs occupancy permits and those types of things. We will leave in place that ability for Chris to close out some of the projects that he's been working on through the years, through the last months and years, so that those individuals who are towards the end of the permitting process won't feel whiplash of getting handed off at the last moment. And then we would also like to have some cross-training and those types of things for the computer systems and all of that, plus just reading in on obviously the larger projects we have going on in town.
Is there, is there any financial, like do we have the money within their current budget to be able to sustain that?
I believe because of the fact that when Chris decided to move and went to a reduced schedule, that we should be able to offset the cost of the new building inspector having overlap. At the same time, if we maintain Chris in any capacity, limited capacity, we also have the revolving fund ability to charge him as a secondary inspector. So we have a little flexibility there where we would not in another department.
Got it.
So on that theme of zoning and those types of good things, one of the things that we pushed out since the last time we all met was a landing page for the 555 Hoppingbrook material that's gained a lot of interest. Actually, this page was up the last time we met, but I was having a hard time dealing individually and telling people, there's a great page that has all of the materials that you want to see. So our IT ace, Chris Mayo, has activated a way for any interested parties to go to that page for the 555 Hoppingbrook. If you search it in the bar at the top, it's also on the planning board's page. There's now a button you can click to sign up. Anytime anything is added to that page or any change is made, you can sign up to receive an email. We already had 100 people, more than 100 people sign up for those updates, so that's great. People are taking advantage of that. We put it out on Facebook and got a good response as well. So we think that will help people stay up to date on that. One other thing I just wanted to touch on, a couple, so the balancing rock issue, I don't know how aware everybody is. It's sort of, it got a lot of media attention in the beginning. The trick with balancing rock is that it is on private property. It is in a conservation area. And we also have interest, we've been offered by private companies who are interested in replacing the rock should the town be interested. But as I mentioned, it's not on town property. So I've been working with the trustees of the balancing rock group there, and they've sort of said, you know, they would be interested if the town was interested, but at the same point, they don't want to sort of be responsible. So I've given you that correspondence. I think at some point, the select board should, should you be interested, I could put this as an agenda item for public discussion, so we can sort of go through the pros and cons of getting involved, having a public-private partnership if everybody's interested in putting that rock back or letting sleeping rocks lie is also...
Let me try to get a consensus. Is there interest, Mr. Sparrow, in your part, Ms. Hind, in your part on this matter?
I mean, kind of, but I don't know. I kind of want to, personally, I'm not, I'm not going to rock the boat if other people are interested, but a part of me wants to kind of hands off. It's not really, it's on private property, so I'm a little concerned about us interjecting. But I'm also not going to rock the boat if the other people on this board feel differently.
Your reaction?
My first reaction when I heard the news was, I hope the board never has to get involved with putting it back. So I'm going to stick with that and also never, ever, ever undo the work of Mother Nature. She should be left alone. So that is my, I understand the whole, it is what Holliston is, kind of how balancing rock is. But I did not sign up when I joined the select board to make sure that balancing rock stayed in place.
For those old enough to remember, I just see a margarine commercial in my head. I see Mike Cassidy laughing, right? Remember that commercial back in the 70s? You probably don't. It's not nice to fool Mother Nature.
Oh, I do not remember that commercial, but I would...
Anyways, I'm of the same opinion. I think I'd rather let it lie.
Let balancing rocks...
Let the, let the private ownership and other interested parties work it out.
Great. All right. So I will, I will let them know that we're here, obviously, if there's any other developments, but that's where the board is. By the end of this month, I think the Casey's project should be done. Everything should be said until it's completely finalized in the spring. And so the schedule that we had up online still appears to be on track there. Last but not least, next week, right across the street from that, we will have Front Street feedback on your agenda next week. We have also, as the board requested, to receive feedback from residents. We have a form up on the website. Again, Chris Mayo has put that together and is tracking all of the comments that we've received, feedback so far on Front Street. So next week will be a time to go through those and receive feedback and act accordingly if necessary. Just as a reminder to everybody, the board voted to have that change in place through April 1st as a pilot program. That's all I have.
Thank you, Travis. Any questions for the town administrator from the Zoom call?
I just have a quick one, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Who is doing zoning enforcement right now? So Chris Canny is most likely making sure the building inspector's office is operating well and things aren't getting jammed up down there. Is he doing any enforcement now or are we waiting for the new hire to come in to sort of pick back up on zoning enforcement? Is that a reasonable expectation to have of Chris? I would not think so. He's probably already been incredibly generous of his time with the town, so...
So I would say that things that come in from the public, if he can't handle, he would be forwarding to me. He is responding to email, maybe not as quickly as some people would like, but he's responding to email on the schedule that he can keep. And that we have, you know, the town planner I know has had to go out to one site as related to people not necessarily living up to a permit. So it's sort of being spread through the land use group, I would say.
All right. Thank you.
All set?
Conservation agent has also helped with that.
Okay.
That's great. All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the special town meeting warrant discussion. Mr. Hearn, I'll let you guide us through this next step, but from our last meeting, there was some movement to think that we should begin looking at approving some of the articles in their current form. Also, in addition to that, you are going to recommend reopening the warrant for some period of time at the end of this month. And I think it would be a good idea to start tackling some of the articles that are in front of us that I think there is some consensus on from this board in order to move them to the finance committee for their consideration in the next seven weeks or so before town meeting. So if you want to start, give us an idea of what you want to put in front of us tonight.
Sure. Perfect. Thank you, Chris. So this list is the same, but it's just for reference. Obviously, you have the information. I would say the ones that I've listed here for you, which is seven through 14 essentially, for discussion tonight, I think are, you know, I can take any feedback that you have, but if you're comfortable, I certainly would take a vote and then we could pass them along. For finance committee review, they can start their process, and then I'll have more information for you in the coming weeks as I finalize some. So for example, Article 4, capital budget, there's quite a few things within that that I'm still waiting for clarity on. We're doing our due diligence on a few items within that. And then another example, so Article 6, for example, Community Preservation Fund, they're doing their thing. They voted on some things, but they're going to take advantage of the extra time and have another hearing. And then Article 15, I'm still waiting on quite a bit of information to make sure that we have that to the scope that the board has discussed. So I would start with Article 7, roadway...
Real quick, did you have a placeholder for the governance committee? Is that on there? I missed it.
The governance committee would come at the end. Again, I haven't received anything from them. I'm tracking a number of things that I am aware of interest from groups, but I have not actually received anything in writing yet.
Okay.
And so it's on my radar. It would be off this list because I haven't received anything at the moment.
And visually, I know you want to get to the details, but visually, as I look at that, I don't see a consent agenda on there. I mean, each individual article seems to have its own weight.
I would say a number of these, we've been doing sort of our due diligence when it comes to answering any questions that the finance committee may have ahead of time. I would say that there are a few that if we have general consensus of everybody, I think we could group together because they accomplish similar goals to move us forward and plan ahead. But at the same point, you're right, they each sort of, they certainly...
They could stand on their own.
Merit their own conversations.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Travis.
So I would start with Article number 7. This is one that I think we've discussed a little bit before. The request number on it, it's $353,000 that I would assume to come from the capital expenditure fund. And I would just reiterate, this is essentially the delta of the money available to the highway department to finish a project that has a significant scope. And I would just, I'll read that scope right here. So it's the construction engineering task related to drainage, sidewalk, roadway rehabilitation on Spring, School, Exchange, Union, Mechanic, and Pleasant Streets, also known as the Mudville Neighborhood, or take any action relative thereto. So I provided, obviously, some of the relevant backup on this, but that is a project that essentially, you know, the money that we have available to finish it, we're short about $353,000, and then that closes out that entire area.
If I may have two questions? I was doing a little research before tonight. I could not find where the money was appropriated for the water main replacement. That was 2018. This is like a memory-lingue kind of question.
Would that have come from the water retain earnings account?
Would it have been an article at town meeting? As we're seeing with number 10 up there. I was looking for the equivalent to number 10, Article 10. Like what town meeting?
No recollection.
Yeah. Okay.
So you're looking for the article?
Yeah, right. I'm looking for the article to understand, just for my own reasons, whether or not it was, at that time, thought that the roadway drainage and sidewalk improvements would be included with that dollar amount when it was first appropriated? Or if the plan was always to come back to town meeting for a second request through an article like this one? That's what I'm looking for, but if you don't know, I'll find it on my own. That's okay. I didn't know. I was looking for it here in the backup for the article, and I didn't see it.
No, so as I think that this sort of detail alludes to, you know, some of the roadway things, some of the roadway work that we get done in this town is through Chapter 90 and those types of things. That money is for all throughout town. There are other appropriations, and I would say that the way that this has been sort of cobbled together is if there's some encumbered monies related to various projects, and it just sort of falls short to get it to the end goal by the $353,000 of a relatively large, obviously, overall project number. But to have, you know, the articles that previously are related to this, I can certainly try to identify those.
I can do that, don't worry. Do you think that if we had a sidewalk prioritization study in place, that we would have been able to anticipate this cost through that study?
Certainly.
Okay.
I mean, there are other components to this still than...
Yep, the drainage and the roadway, yep.
And a lot of times, honestly, the things that hold up sidewalks in a lot of instances, and this will, this would come to fruition by looking at sidewalks holistically, is that a lot of these things, the driver of cost when it comes to sidewalks, a lot of times has to do with drainage, right? You're adding impervious surface, and therefore, you need to accommodate the stormwater in some way. Generally, that's basins, but there's certainly runoff and those types of things as well. And so those things go hand in hand. Again, I, you know, I can certainly look at the...
That's okay. I'll take care of it. I mean, I'll... Okay? Those are my questions.
Okay. And so that, this one pager obviously gives the financial backup there. And then you have the email from Sean on that. So if there's any question on the language, the timeline is put in here in the comments. Hope to be done through the summer of '21, and then the final coat to be done April 22, which is pretty much the practice here.
Give me one second, Travis. I'm just kind of loading something, okay?
Sure.
Article 17, Tina.
Which town meeting?
October 29th, 2018.
Thank you.
See if I can grab it here.
I guess if...
Hang on, Travis.
If you have it there, what I'm specifically looking for is whether or not drainage was a part of that or if it was just the water main replacement. And then I'm looking ahead, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, including the water surplus retained earnings or borrow, $450,000 and $1.35 million from Water Infrastructure Reserve Account. A task related to the replacement of approximately 6,100 linear feet of water mains in the Mudville Neighborhood. The scope of this project includes new water mains, valves, hydrants, and service connections, service, surface restorations, and related work on Pleasant, Spring, School, Exchange, Mechanic, and Union. Or take any action relative thereto. So it just speaks to new water main valves, water mains, hydrants, and service connections. Doesn't mention anything about...
Okay. Okay.
Drainage.
Thank you.
Okay. So Travis, is that your wrap on Article 7? Anything else to add?
Nope, if people are comfortable with the language.
I am comfortable with the language. Mr. Sparrow, any questions or a motion possibly?
I will make a motion to approve the, to approve the article being included in the special day of the town meeting on December 5th. Is that kind of the language you're looking for?
Shown as Article 7, yep.
Known as Article 7.
Have a second?
Yeah, the second.
It might be changing the number, who knows? So just to make that clear.
Roadway drainage and sidewalk improvements.
The roadway drainage and sidewalk improvements.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Next one, Travis.
Okay. So Article 8, as we have up here, is the sidewalk prioritization plan. This one you've seen before as well, and then we've had a few discussions on essentially what, you know, I think Ben has done quite a bit of groundwork, going through, doing his, putting his stamp on it, and then also going through the, excuse me, the quote that we have here from Stantec to come up with the cost. And I don't know, Ben, if you'd like to take it away, but where we are is a $40,000 study I would do from free cash. Generally speaking, the way that I would look at these studies is if the study is a design engineer... Generally speaking, the way that I would look at these studies is if the study is a design engineer that leads directly to a specific construction project, that it can come out of CapEx. And if it is a design engineering or planning that sort of is a broader context, that free cash is a more appropriate source. So this year, I would design to be $40,000 from free cash and I believe that it speaks to the scope that the Board has discussed previously and the quote is based on a Stantec quote, which has been reissued to make sure that the number is still good.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't changed anything in the language. The most, a lot of the conversation I think that's important that we've had with folks at the Finance Committee has been about the fact that it's going to be looking for other sources of funding, that there's potential to identify grants and potential opportunities for funding beyond simply spending from the levy. And in addition, to indicate that this particular study is not necessarily to build sidewalks on every square inch of space possible, but to prioritize and to indicate where it would be effective and feasible in the community.
And impact connectivity and those types of things.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, my only comment there is that I don't think anyone should expect that Safe Roots to School, Complete Streets are going to fully fund the amount of work needed to be done in the town of Holliston.
Sure.
But when you do go to apply for those grants, it's
You need this information.
very important to have
Well, and I think it does piggyback into, you know, this is, I think, you know, looking at some of those alternate ways of funding, trying to create a prioritization schedule for sidewalks, but then also looking for how the community wants to move forward with replacements and building new sidewalks and things like that. And, you know, is it a part of, you know, is it a line item in the budget? Is it a, you know, how are we going to work with that in moving forward and putting together a plan? It's something that we need to do further beyond that, but it's not necessarily directly in the article.
I would just point out that there's not a city or town in the state of Massachusetts that has every road sidewalk. That's never been an expectation and nor would it ever be
No, it's an unrealistic one, but some of the rhetoric came around about some stuff like that and I think it's silly.
Do you have a problem with how I have the comments here? So
No, not at all.
Within the comments, I just said that the town has been aggressive in pursuing funding through state programs such as Safe Roots to School, Shared Streets and Spaces, and Complete Streets. I'm not implying that that's the only funding source we anticipate. I'm just, I just wanted to make that point.
No, I think that looks
No, I think it's great. I think that's, I think that's good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the article shown as Number Eight, Sidewalk Prioritization Plan, estimated cost $40,000.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Carries, moving on, Mr. Hearn.
So another study that has been brought back with quite a bit of due diligence here from Mr. Sparrow is the, what is being referred to as the Water System Modernization Plan and I put in here includes source study. What you'll see within the backup is that we spent quite a bit of time explaining the need for the source aspect of it, but also making sure that within the Stantec quote, which I apologize, it's just sort of reiterated here because they gave us both quotes together. But we've made sure that everything that we're looking for when it comes to planning for the valve aspect that we know is coming through Mass D E P, the Asset Management Plan update, all of those types of things can be covered with the $40,000. And then when it comes to a well source investigation and water supply planning, that a overall cost estimate of $75,000 from water retained earnings gets us quite a bit of information that's going to help us plan ahead for water infrastructure for a long time to come and also prepare us to provide water to residents into the future.
So I'm comfortable with the $75,000, but I just want to add that we're still, we're still working. We haven't received back the change in the language to the studies yet from the engineer. We talked to her. We didn't tell her to like rush on it because we have a little bit of runway here, but I can certainly talk to get it done. But I just would like to hold off on voting on this until I have that language official. Ninety-five percent comfortable. I was on the phone with her, so I heard her say she's, you know, that everything's okay. But I would still like that language before I move ahead with this.
Okay, I would, so what I put in here is from Erica, which essentially says for the, excuse me, sometimes so a desktop level investigation would be about $5,000 and assuming there are some viable options for completing test wells following desktop screening, it would be about $15,000 for two test well sites. This cost is mostly for a driller to be onsite installing the test wells, so about $20,000 for the whole round, but you're asking for her to put that in more of a
Yeah, it's going to be, actually, like I'd like to have that actual language in the study before we prove it.
Okay.
Let's get over to, excuse me, Number Ten Sean, Travis.
All right, and to Number Ten, this is one that we discussed last time. So I did a little bit more work on the sidewalk component of this. The question that I wanted to bring back was essentially if the Select Board doesn't want to move ahead with Winter Street specifically, is there another project that we can swap in? At this point, Winter Street is the one that we have shovel ready, so I don't think we'd be swapping in. We would be removing the article. And so the problem here, just to reiterate for anybody who's sort of new to the conversation, is that this project, as currently constituted, would cover about two miles of Winter Street water main replacements, but does not plan for any sidewalks or other sort of improvements. It is, it's a water specific project. And so I did go up to Winter Street myself, take a look around and I talked to the gentleman who was saying that some of the frontage of his family's property, he'd be happy to sort of discuss with the town. And so that's where I am with that. I think we can certainly move ahead with planning of sidewalks, but if we want to hold this up until that is fully vetted, I don't have a project to put in place of this. It would be removing this article until a later date and getting another design for a water main project. And I would just reiterate too, because I know that Ms. Hine brought this up last time, that this, you know, with the Complete Streets, what we want to see is factoring in things like sidewalks when we plan these projects. But this, the design of this project was initiated and sort of in place before Complete Streets was adopted, right? That's where this project specifically is in the pipeline of things to do, so to speak, the pipeline. And so that's sort of, you know, I understand the frustration of the Board. At the same point, it certainly was not in any way, you know, ignoring what your wishes are. It's just sort of how this one shook out. So again, I don't have one to swap in, so it's sort of remove from the warrant if that's the choice.
Thoughts on that idea Ben?
On removing it?
Mm-hmm.
I, well, I mean, we've already gone, started moving forward. We've already done some design here, right?
Correct.
So we're, you know, I think, I'd like to, before we start adding things like sidewalks anyway, I'd like to see what the Sidewalk Prioritization Plan would have to say about some of those kinds of things. And I do agree that it needs to be included in future projects and I think this kind of can be the canary in the coal mine that kind of gets us, wakes us up to make sure that that happens in the future. But I'd like, I don't, I don't think we need to remove from the warrant personally.
Tina.
Two thoughts, so give me 30 seconds to do history here. So what we see with Mudville as a comparison is we see an Article two years ago, 2018, October, a special town meeting for the money to do what Article Ten currently here before us is proposing to do. And then two years later, we're coming back to request money, different sources, but we're looking for money to finish the work in Mudville. If that's to be the path forward, if that's the intentional plan, then I don't have an issue with Article Ten being here with the water main replacement because that's mimicking or mirroring what happened with Mudville. If, again, it's intentional. My only question would then become, are there different decisions that one would make in doing the work here in Article Ten if you anticipated sidewalks coming? Would you do anything different in how you approach the water main replacement if you knew you were going to be? So I don't want to separate the sidewalks from the article, from this particular project, but I see from just the most recent example that that is actually what happened, is there was a two-year separation between the work being appropriated, the work being paid for or appropriated by town meeting and then coming back and asking for the rest. So that, I put that out for you and Ben to mull over. If it's intentional, and this is how it works, then my only question would be, are those questions being asked now that the work being done to replace the water main is keeping in mind that a sidewalk is coming in the future?
And I would just, I think I mentioned it probably clumsily last time. I can start this process on looking at sidewalks. That is, that is one where there's going to be some hoops that I will probably be the one to jump through when it comes to the scenic route, those types of things. Get those processes initiated now so that none of those things hold us up in the future, right?
Yeah.
Initiate everything so we're running simultaneously so that we can move as quickly and we don't get hung up on those later. As I went up the process, I, as I'm looking at it, and again, I mean, we can certainly have Sean weigh in if you'd prefer, but the way that that road is so narrow, some of the sidewalks are not necessarily, may have to disconnect from the actual roadway the way that that, right? And so in that regard, when you ask the question, is this going to, you know, do they have to be done simultaneously? I would say that the sidewalk is a completely different animal in that, in that particular street, in my mind.
Okay.
But again, when I'm looking, planning ahead and trying to figure out how sidewalks would work on that narrow street and with that grade, I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to put a lot of heads together and I don't mind initiating that, but it's, that's sort of, you know, and I think too, with the sidewalk prioritization plan that we're discussing, right? Figuring out, having somebody come in and have that mindset to look at that project may open up things that we can't think of right now. If what we're trying to do is connect, you know, especially a large neighborhood in that area to the main strip where the businesses are, you know, there may be multiple ways to get at that that a sidewalk prioritization plan could help us out with.
Okay.
And so that's where I am with that for too, but I, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in.
Okay, then the only other comment that I would have and is that 6,100 feet back in 2018 was 295 a linear foot. And here we are in 2020 at 10,600 linear foot, saying 260 per linear foot. So I'm sure that makes sense to somebody, but it doesn't make sense to me when I'm looking at it.
No, and I think if I didn't, I think I mentioned it in a previous meeting, but I don't think, I don't have it here. You know, this, this sort of blows up what the previous assumption was, which was one mile, one million, right? This is 1.4 per mile.
Yeah.
And that's what the market is and that's, you know, I can, I can add more to the comments to signify that, but it is, it is, it impacts us when we're planning. And it's going to impact the results of the water modernization study and what that can allow us to plan and what we're going to have to be prepared to pay for.
So my take is I'm prepared to put this project off until we have a sidewalk study done. This is a critical street in my mind to do as much as we possibly can to lay out sidewalks, period. I might disagree with your earlier assumption of how we got here. I won't go down that road, but I might disagree with that. I think it's important now though that we take our time to look at the project through the lens of what we want to achieve here. And that to me is not just the water pipe replacement, but the kind of sidewalk infrastructure that benefits hundreds and hundreds of people. If we were to move forward with this project now and then, you know, in a year or two, to Tina's point, have a study on our hands that says, yeah, it'd be great to put a sidewalk there, I'd cringe for every taxpayer who would have to fund anything that says we have to rip up what we just put down. The whole idea of doing a sidewalk study is to co-locate those projects together so that they're all done at once. The Mudville project, I think, is slightly different. I don't want to get into the engineering because I'm the dumbest person in the room on that, but I think the Mudville project anticipated sidewalks because there are sidewalks there now. So the course of binder that they put down was not meant to be permanent. I think what they're doing is putting in sidewalks, granite curbing, and then a final binding coat. So it was planned for that purpose. I don't want to put a pipe down Winter Street with a nice new paving and then say in a year or two, God, it would really be nice to put a sidewalk there. It's a waste of time and money. So I'd like to give us the chance to get the study approved and have folks at our DPW look very closely at how they can achieve what we're trying to do here, which is to improve the sidewalk conditions within our town. Waiting a year, to me, doesn't make much difference at the end of the day as long as that water pipe can make it a year. If I'm told by you or Sean that that pipe is at end of life, we've got chronic leaks, that's a different show and I haven't heard that. I've just heard that it's next on the list. I also think it's been next on the list for about eight years or something like that. So I'm not feeling the urgency. Waiting a year doesn't mean we lose the money. Waiting a year means next year if we do this plus another street, we might be getting closer to that three miles per year goal that I think we should be clicking on once the water pipe replacement plan is done. So that's my take. But at this point, I think it's best, because it sounds like we have three different kinds of opinion, that we take a step back from this article, give you a chance to get some answers on the pipes, yeah, the pipes' conditions, the urgencies, and the pros and cons of waiting a year before we authorize it again. Does that settle with you or Mr. Sparrow?
So not taking a vote tonight?
Not taking a vote tonight.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
You okay with that tonight?
Yeah, and choose my words carefully. In terms of workload for the Highway Department and DPW, is this a significant lift for them in a 12-month calendar year? So if they know they have Winter Street on their to-do list for the next 12 months or however long, if that is removed, does that have an impact on their workload for that same timeframe? I know they contract this out. They're not, I know they're not, they're not the ones doing that, but when pros and cons are looked at, where does that fall? As a neutral, no impact, as a con, or as a pro? I think that's worth, that's the question that I would add to that.
I think to Mr. Cronin's question on the urgency, you know, if they're up there responding to this quite a bit, then I think, you know, that does sway it, so let me get back to you on that. And I will bring up the urgency question before making a decision on whether or not to remove it.
And also the cost benefit of doing a street slash water pipe replacement at the same time you're doing sidewalks. I'm guessing there's some, some gain there, some construction gain. And I completely acknowledge that of all the streets that we're asking for a sidewalk to be put on, we'd probably ask for the worst one, but the challenge is there. Let's see what we can do. And report back, okay?
Okay, we will put that one
Next, Number Eleven.
Yes, so Number Eleven, the water treatment plant. This is another one that I've updated a couple of times on and we've continued to go around with, the number on this has changed and we're looking at an additional appropriation of $850,000. And the way that that has sort of worked out, what I've included here is information from the engineer of the project, Ali Peran. And so what we had was Ali, a couple of the questions had come from Finance Committee members, the liaisons for the DPW, and then the Select Board's liaison, Ben, were on a call with the engineer just to sort of go through all of these questions, make sure all the questions were answered before everybody could, you know, be comfortable with where we are. So essentially, what we, what's happened here is this project, as we know, based on the original timeline, did have some delay, is now, is now sticking to a timeline that was sort of the revised one, which has it open in Spring, Summer '22, but the bid process to keep on that track would start in December, January of this year into '21. And so what we want to do is essentially make sure that we have the right appropriation to be going out to bid so that based on what comes back through that bid process, we're ready to go. We can get shovels in the ground. So essentially, what's happened is that there was an original appropriation of $8,375,000. That was a borrowing authorization. There was a second authorization of $600,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund, excuse me, the Water Enterprise Fund's retained earnings. That was meant to cover design engineering. And so where we are with some tweaks to what the engineer is looking at, with where the project is now estimated to come in at with a 10% contingency for construction phase engineering services is just under $10 million and we have just under $9 million. And we're looking at a shortfall of $850,000. And my recommendation, although I've written this to be, give us as much flexibility leading up to December as possible, but my recommendation would be to increase the borrowing authorization and the reason that I say that specifically is that we don't know where the bids are going to come in. If we tie up water retained earnings, that money is tied up if we have any issues. Out of $1.4 million, if we tie up $850,000, that money is essentially, you know, not usable by us for that period of time. To increase the borrowing authorization, if the bids do come in lower than what we're planning ahead for, you know, all we've done is sort of increased the borrowing authorization and not tied up the funding that we have available to keep that department running. So I have here the language on where we are and I can add any further detail to this, but what I have is also the most up-to-date package that came forth from Ali. And one of the things that he added here, as some people were questioning, the indices that were used to now explain why the cost of construction has increased. the, the indices that were used to now explain why the, the cost of construction has increased. From the original design, or the original estimate that was used when the borrowing authorization went through town meeting, to now, and actually what we've seen is increased construction costs due to the pandemic, because construction has been humming along. And so, yeah, I will, any questions on, on the language? I can certainly add any, any points that, that the board feels relevant to the comments, or?
No, I think the only thing that I would add, as I pondered this, I was on that call the other day, so I, you know, saw that stuff. But I think one of the reasons why we had, came up with that 8.375 in the, in the first place, and really attempted an article before we had design, is principally because we did want to apply for the SRF, if I'm not mistaken. So that was the impetus for having that number in the first place. Because part of the challenge was, is why we, why do we have to redo the number? But part of it was, we were trying to estimate something before we really knew some of the constraints and realities of, of the, the site. So we did that initially because we wanted to apply for that lower-cost loan from the state. But otherwise, I'm pretty comfortable with everything.
Tina?
Remind me again, when we hear back about our application for the state revolving funds?
So that application is in. I don't, I don't have a timeline at the moment. The SRF is an interesting animal, I've been through it quite a bit. One of the interesting things is, what we're looking for is approval, because to, to get the cash flow moving on this, essentially, they'll give us zero interest, short-term borrowing, to get us the, the cash flow through. And then, you know, at some point, the state as a group is gonna go out and, and borrow. So to get the answer yes or no on the SRF, I will get you that date as soon as possible, on when we can expect to hear back. At the same point, I would just say something that I've said elsewhere, and so just make sure I've said it in this public forum as well. As I view the SRF, and I've been through this process quite a bit, it's a best practice to go through, it, it absolutely is worth us pursuing. In my mind, it is not a deal breaker for this project. Should the SRF say no to us?
Okay.
I think where the market is at the moment, if we were to go out on our own, we would do very well. The SRF is, is great, it's a benefit to the communities, absolutely. But the, the, the way it ties our hands in certain aspects, when it comes to following along with that procedure, can, can add more headaches when it comes to not just employee time, I mean, actual issues with, with project, that if we were to have to borrow independently, I don't think that, that that should stop this project at all. At the same point, I, I will get you the date, when we can expect to hear.
Well, I guess I'm looking at the raise appropriate transfer piece of, or borrow. From everything that I hear you say consistently over time, is the borrow is the, is the more significant piece to this, that we would be looking to borrow the money, as opposed to raise appropriate transfer.
I think in this regard, the, the way that we're looking at it, I think increasing the borrowing authorization is the best decision at the moment. I think what I've heard from people, from individuals on this board, and also from the finance committee, is that, you know, if we can avoid borrowing, there's always sort of the benefit, you save on interest and those types of things. But increasing the borrowing authorization here, in my mind, does not commit us to going necessarily down that path. It, it, it ties our hands the least amount right now, and allows us also to make a separate decision later if we feel like cash partially is the way to go. So, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse the issue. Right now, I believe increasing the borrowing authorization is the right way. I think that, you know, the way that the, the rate modeling was done, that this project can be covered through borrowing authorization. The $600,000 is what it is, that was meant to pay for design, that's already been done. And so I, I think increasing the borrowing authorization is the right course right now, and I think it would be in the long run.
Okay, thank you.
Travis, quick question. Sean filed the latest updated SRF in August, I believe, mid-August. That was prior to the revelation of this cost increase. Do you happen to know if he's amended the application to reflect this?
We have not yet.
I can't hear you, sorry.
We have not yet.
But he intends to.
We could do that, yes.
Okay. Would that affect whether or not we get a green light from them, in other words?
I, I don't believe it'd have any impact.
Very good, all right. I would like to entertain a motion to approve Article 11, the water treatment plant's supplemental appropriation.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's good.
And I will bring you more back, more information back on projected timelines for the SRF.
Thank you.
And just actually, one quick question about that, too, is if we do get approval for, for the SRF, does that mean we have to use it, or could we go out on our own, if we did so choose?
So we wouldn't be tied into anything until we sort of sign on the dotted line. And so at that point, you know, we would have to have a very real conversation, and we would want to time that with a few, because if we were gonna say essentially, we're not gonna use the borrowing authorization, and what we want to do is use cash, we would need a town meeting approval, obviously, to change that course. As we are going to be approaching May.
Well, I meant it more in terms of the SRF. I mean, if we wanted to borrow on our own, as opposed to using the SRF, that, that particular method.
Oh, we're not committed to using the SRF.
Yeah, that's all I, that's all I was wondering about that part.
No, no.
Yes, we would have to borrow, but I just meant that we could bond it ourselves versus using the state bonds.
Okay, so that was Article 11, we have that vote. So then the next one is the stormwater management. I have no change here, the only thing I would say is, what I've asked for is the quote that I have here, obviously was in a draft form, and I'd like it to be finalized. But other than that, I've seen quite a few of these as well, and it's just a realization, a reality of, of where we are with Mass DEP's MS4 permit process, to stay in good standing with Mass DEP, and get all of the relevant information that we need for stormwater pollution in the area, do the, the data collection that keeps us up to date. This is essentially what we need to pay an engineering firm to do for us.
Any questions on this article?
Yeah, we had talked about possibly, like, looking at, like, I, I think you referred to it as a menu, to being able to see, like, what different kinds of things we could get, if we get the omelet and the French toast, and the eggs benedict. Are we saying that we have to get all, everything on the breakfast menu, or can we?
She's not, I have not dinner yet, now I'm worried, God, I must have just left this conversation.
Philly beans for dinner, you're killing me.
I'm sorry, I'll bring doughnuts next time.
So I, I essentially asked what we could take off this list, and the only things that were sort of discussed as possibilities were all of the smallest items.
Okay.
And then at that point, I think there's quite a few of those that I don't think we, you know, public education assistance, I think, is something that I would personally not want to cut. I think, I think Holliston needs to have some public conversations about stormwater that I think we're a little late to the party on, and I would want to keep that in there.
And I think we, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I think we need to start doing a long-term plan on these, because we're gonna have these for a while, so let's start figuring out what this is gonna look like, and have a plan, and put together something that's a little more, I mean, than just an article every couple of years that people have lots of questions about.
Is it capital?
Is it capital?
I don't, I don't, I don't.
There are, there are capital things that come out of MS4 permits for other communities. Sometimes it's, it's capital that, that benefits you elsewhere, like culverts, when it comes to stopping water flow under roadways and things like that, and, and that gets tied into the MS4 permit. I don't think we have any of those currently that I've seen on the docket, when it comes to specifically the stormwater. We have culvert issues.
And there's, and there's the potential, too, from these particular studies for further work, too, that could be required. So I think we have to kind of, I think we have to start putting together some kind of a, a look. So that way, we're, we're kind of, especially if there, if some of these could get pricey, depending on the nature of the project, we want to think about what, what that looks like, so there are not a, there's not a surprise down the road.
I think the most obvious funding source for future capital needs, when it comes to stormwater and keeping up with our MS4 permit, and where we are in the MS4 permit right now is still the, show us that you're doing the studies to stay up to date. The next thing, the next hammer to drop from MS4 on all communities, not just Holliston, is gonna be here are the projects that we want you to do. And to me, the, the only funding source when it comes to Holliston moving forward is gonna be something like the solar revenue, setting up a fund that, that would, you know, cover a number of different areas, but potentially stormwater as well. Because, you know, there are communities that have set up stormwater fees, or the rain tax, and it doesn't go well. It's never a fun conversation. And so, yeah, you're right, where we are right now is.
Yeah, and that's, this is a, this is a further down the road, but I think we just, I think we gotta start putting this into a larger context, and a longer conversation, that I'm totally prepared to have with you at another time, that we can kind of work on putting together.
Any other questions? Tina, you good?
I'm good, yeah.
I have a motion to approve Article 12, as stated for the stormwater management.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, Harris. Next one, Travis?
So the design engineering for Nine Green Street, I've had a few conversations about this. I think, you know, and the conversation started before I came aboard. But at this point, my goal, sitting, sitting in town hall, is to say that that building, the sooner we move to get rid of that building, the better. Having youths on top of it, and having those in the police report is not enjoyable. It's not a safe structure, it needs to be removed. But I think also, you know, there's, there's sort of, there's some good things that can come from this, this process. One of the things, you know, I'll discuss later on, is, is how we can potentially plan for the town to be prepared to, to find funding sources, that's on the EDA status conversation that I'll tee up later on tonight. But when it comes to this particular project, what, what the facilities manager and I put out and asked for proposals on, we did get a quote back that, for everything we're looking for, which is the plan to demolish the building, to handle the stormwater on the site, which is a, a problem, we need to make sure that it's being directed correctly. Then, you know, potentially look at a retaining wall due to grade on that site. And then, you know, in the last sort of, the last round of it all, to, to say if, if, if it's gonna become a parking lot, or if it's gonna become something to that effect. I know green space was mentioned from the Nine Green Street community, that we would need a plan in place for that as well. So what I've included here at 5,4900, from free cash, is based on the quote that we received for the scope that we put out on the street. The demolition plan, obviously being the priority that we'd like to move ahead towards, but then, you know, site planning as well, is gonna need to be required.
So this value does not include the action of demolition, it's just a plan to do it?
Absolutely.
So we can back in the spring after the plan is completed?
Absolutely, this would lead to an article in May, by which point, if, if we have some designing in, in place, that I can also start pursuing some grant funding.
Any questions on that, Mr. Sparrow? No, Tina?
Yes, one. Why does the town have to own this property?
The town took the property.
Mm-hmm. And why, why do we have to continue to own it, as opposed to doing something else with it?
We don't have to.
Is that, is that a, all right, so is that a generally held opinion? Because I think if that's not something that we're prepared to present to town meeting, I see questions about this, and I see challenges when we come back in the spring for the actual demolition work. So this is something I, my goal would be to see kind of cleared up, so that when we go to town meeting in, in December, we can present to the town the sort of why we're making this decision, why we're looking to own it, or, which I believe is the right decision, I believe the committee made that clear as well. But if not, then why, why would we consider doing anything else with it? Because I, I just think that this is the kind of stuff that the community struggles to understand. I would struggle to understand if I hadn't even been on the committee, you know, here I am on the committee, this is tricky stuff. I think that's a question that needs to get answered, but when we present this article at town meeting in December, is why the town needs to own it, or if the town is not gonna own it. That, that just seems to me to be important.
I, so I have been discussing this with a few groups, and quite honestly, the only person who's brought up the idea of, of putting this back and, and putting it into private hands, came up at the finance committee, and I think the, the context of it was not necessarily, we want this. It was more, that was a conversation that was originally held, is that still a possibility? And the only thing I would say, as I came in, the Nine Green Street community, which I've had a couple of requests to say, when are they meeting next, to which I've had to say, they've sort of been dissolved at this point, they gave their final product, and, and they're on their way, is that we could certainly, you know, sort of have a public discussion of, of Nine Green, and what came out of that report, to, to sort of catch everybody up, especially as it relates to this. I think what we need before that conversation, or, or, we can do multiple, right? But we need this information to say, this is how to go about attacking that site. The building needs to come down. My only point, when I say, could it be flipped back to the public, the private sector? It could theoretically, but that's, this is designing sort of the, we need a demolition plan, we need to get rid of that building, we need to have the contaminants underneath capped. If the end result, which was the Nine Green Street sort of end result, which was, you know, a, a parking lot that's publicly owned, benefits the library and the park, but also the downtown businesses, if that's the community's goal, then we have clear direction on the next sort of thing, which is taking the design engineering that we're talking about here, and then we have, you know, a clear goal. All the while, I, I believe that we can, we can be searching for grant funding that may take some of this thing out of, if it were to be a town-owned project specifically, you know, help the town sort of come to that arrangement a lot less painfully, if we can find grant funding.
Yeah, I think we do have to make it clear that this is sort of, this is a design, and that there will be future requests for money. You know, I, I know, I know the conversation, I've, I, watching the finance committee meetings, and, you know, Andrew's school was certainly brought up as, as a, you know, somebody bought it for, got it for nothing, and tore it down, and took all the responsibility for it. So there is certainly precedent for doing certain, certain kinds of things, although this one has some unique challenges. But I think it's, we have to be abundantly clear that, that if we approve this, and this is the road we want to have to go, that we're going to have future expenditure to do the demolition, and whatever plan we decide to engage.
I, I agree with everything that was said. I think it's important that the design feature is, is emphasized. There's some thinking still to be had here, but looking ahead, I, I see it as a town resource, once it's capped, once it's made safe. I've had some conversations with Travis about exploring the possibility of putting solar canopy on the site as well, to help generate revenue, in the same way that it would effectively if it was back on the town's tax rolls. So there are a lot of options, I think we can explore those, once we award the contract to the, to the vendor to look at any and all options. So I have no issues with the way it's written. Does anybody want to make a motion at this point to approve Article 13, design engineering for Nine Green Street?
Yes, I'll make that motion, yes.
Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move on, Mr. Hearn, 14, I think, is it the last one? Nope, we have two more.
It is the last one for this evening, because I, I'm still working on Article 15. So we had a relatively long discussion on tax from last meeting, and we had Chief Stone in here on it for a different issue, as, as tax recommendations came in front of you. But when it comes to Article 14, I've included all of the quotes related to the equipment that TAC discussed as a group and voted on. The remaining question that I have, that I've posed to the Capitol Subcommittee, and, and I don't think we had a chance to fully vet, is, is the approach to, if, if this board supports all of the equipment in here, the best way to handle some of the software costs related to it? So for example, and, and I put the sheet here, this sort of my sheet from the ICMA, if you go, and so that would be on page 77. And so the chief added in here, the sign for the event parking ahead, this, this obviously does more than just have the sign, is also, the speed and message trailers provide sturdy mobility, excuse me, is this not the counter as well? The radar trailer as well. So if you notice, for the recommended financing plan, I have a dollar amount in FY21, which I have here to be done through cash. But then, the way that this is currently structured, based on the quote, that would cover three years' worth of software, which this is essentially, it's collecting data, so it's all cloud-based. So we get three years within this price, I would need to work out with the accountant how we would handle that, because we're not gonna prepay software, but it's a, it's a Warren article, so it doesn't sunset it, and it, we can actually make that work. I, I had that conversation with Sharon. But then, starting in '24, we would need to build that into the budget, because then that becomes part of the budget. So I just want everybody to understand that mechanism. But that's one question, do we want to make sure that what we're approving here, if, if the board supports the piece of equipment, do you want to be supporting three years' worth all upfront, or do we want to be doing one year, and then building into next year's budget? You're shaking your head, but we'll, discussion.
I'm following, following my.
I'll start with you, Ben.
So, two questions related to the, the software, well, actually, three questions. The first is, is that who would wind up being responsible for it ultimately? Would it be the police department would be handling the software ultimately?
So I'll use that as a, as a reason to give a broader context here, which is, a sentiment was raised within the, the TAC group, which includes the DPW director, the fire chief, the police chief, select board member, and some members of the public, is that these requests are made by this group, and, and there's sort of a feeling that, you know, we don't want, they don't want in their own budgets to be sort of, this was your request, you already asked for this, why are you asking for something else? This is a group that's been tasked with doing a job, and these are pieces of equipment that, that sort of. This is a group that's been tasked with doing a job, and these are pieces of equipment that, that sort of belong to that mission. At the same point, as they are assets, they do need to sit somewhere. So I would say that most likely, we currently own similar signs to this, and some of them sit within the DPW. I would say that if what we're using the collection of some of this information for is traffic mitigation, that I would have it sit at the police department, and then I would have the software maintenance sit within the police budget. But I could talk to the IT director about that as well, as he may have, you know, sort of other thoughts on it. But that would be my thought, because the information that we're using when we're collecting this traffic data is going to impact the discussions that the chief is currently having when it comes to his new unit within the HPD. And so that's how I would, I would probably have it.
And the second point is kind of a point that, as I understand it, we can't really prepay. Like, we have to kind of, like, we cannot, we, like, because I remember some of this came up in FY '21. It was, we have to be careful about paying for like next year and this year when it comes to the accounting and things like that.
Yep. And so that was a conversation I had with Sharon, which was essentially, we would, this warrant article would stay open for at least three years. I don't have an issue with that. As our discussion went, another component of this request, right? So there's three pieces of equipment, but then there's also a line for traffic signs. That is also not a request to buy 30 signs all at once, right? It is as, as TAC is hearing hearings from the public, that if a sign is warranted through that, they have this mechanism to essentially.
That's some patch to do.
To fulfill that. So that also, because the warrant article wouldn't sunset as of June 30th, that gives them more time to use that funding over time. And I would use the same opportunity to essentially say, "We're not going to prepay you software. We're going to pay you here, here, and here in three installments over three years", and then we could close out this warrant article.
And that sort of relates to my third question, which is basically if we do go with this and we do get that software, are we getting a guarantee on the rate for the software? Just to make sure, like, if they, if we say, like, can we get a three-year, you know, if we sign, say, a three-year contract and we know it's going to be, you know, 1,450 a year, we know that it's going to be that way, and then it's not going to be 1,575 or something like that, and suddenly we're, you know, granted, it's only $125, but still could.
That's how I read the quote, and I'll be honest, I've done municipal finance enough to know that exactly how this is going to play out. Is that they're going to ask me to pay three months. I'm going to have to tell them, "No", we're going to fight about it for a long time, and I'm going to pay them based on my schedule.
Right.
And that's how it's going to go.
Alright. I just, I just want to make sure that it, like, you know, that if that's the route we go, that the article has the mechanism to handle, to handle that.
I believe it does. I believe it does.
Okay. I'm good.
Any other questions?
So I absolutely think we should purchase three years' worth of subscription upfront with this article. I think that should be in here. And the reason I say that is because I think the Traffic Advisory Committee is a commitment to our community. And in order to do that, we have to be able to perform our, the responsibilities of the committee over a prolonged period of time. And if this is something that's discussed every year with every warrant, you know, are we going to get another round of subscriptions for? I don't think we're making that commitment to the community. So I would really push for the 36 months, the three-year subscription with this initial request. I have a question. Is there a mechanism by which you can come back and revisit this article? Or would it need, so what I'm looking at here is the traffic signs at 4,500. It is completely foreseeable, anticipated that the signs will become more, there may be requests down the road where you're talking about something more than 150 per sign. We haven't seen it yet as a TAC, but I would imagine that that's coming at some point, where you're talking about perhaps a pedestrian-activated beacon for a crosswalk. I think that probably, I don't know how this board would take it, how you would, how you would view that. If you would see it as signage, I think in general, that's how most people do see it. With that said, those are $10,000 to $15,000. So if the TAC was to make a recommendation, would we grow this article in the future, come back and revisit? We would write a new article?
This article would stand alone over time.
Okay, alright, that was my question.
It would carry until expended or we closed it. But to reappropriate, you would need another article. Or more likely, you know, to say, "If what we want is signage", you know, as we discussed, what we're also recognizing here is that the signed budget within DPW, especially this fiscal year '21, that has only $1,000, is really only allowing them to sort of maintain the ones that are worn and broken. And not necessarily buy new. This is, the idea behind this is buy new. So that another thing that we could do is sort of right-size that budget looking ahead as well. But this gives TAC something to spend off of. And the only reason I have 4,500, quite frankly, is because of the vote that TAC.
No, absolutely, and I don't disagree with any of that. I think this is great. I just had a long-winded question there, so a short answer, but a long question. Thank you.
I have a question, Travis, maybe for you, Tina, as well. The way the language is written, "To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated transfer from available funds for the purposes of acquiring signs necessary for the Traffic Advisory Committee to be responsive to resident requests that are deemed to have merit", shouldn't, and with respect to dispersing funds associated with this dollar amount, should the TAC make a recommendation to the select board? And don't we then approve the expense? Should that be expressed in the?
You're right.
I need to change.
Either in the comment or the article?
I need to change that, especially in the motion.
In the motion? Okay.
And so just to, actually, that leads me to one overall point. This has not been reviewed by Talerman yet.
Understood, we understand.
Yeah. And so I would hope that any of those types of things get caught, but you're right, that absolutely needs to be changed.
And if I understand correctly, to Ms. Heinz's point about purchasing 36 months' worth of software, are you suggesting the accountant might have some reservations about doing that? Did I hear that?
She, she will not prepay three years all upfront. That is established. We don't do that in municipal government, and so I just.
Why is that the case?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
Oh, why, why do we do so many things?
Is it, is it, is it not permissible or is it not practiced?
It is a, it is a, it's not permissible. Even with warrant articles, it is frowned upon and would be dinged by the auditors as well. Yeah, I've been through it in other areas as well.
I'll, I'll trust you, but I'll tell you at the state finance level, it is permissible under certain circumstances. When you can demonstrate through your audit file that the procurement has an inherent benefit, i.e. you're purchasing it now because it'll cost more money later. And for that reason, a lot of equipment and other softwares are sold in batches for the, you know, for the benefit of the, of the state agency, and it's quite permissible. So if you're, if you're that familiar with the process, then I'll believe you. But it's awkward that municipal finance is in conflict with state finance. You would think it would be very similar.
It would stink.
And furthermore, I'd ask you to check our internal controls to find out if there's any such utterance or recommendation therein in writing about pre-purchasing software. Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve Article 14 as constructed with potential edits to come for the public safety signs and equipment.
So moved.
Second, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Travis, I think you said that's it for tonight on the articles. You still have a little bit of work to do on a couple of.
Yes.
Very good. Alright. Let me go all the way back up.
You were asking him why that was for the purchase of software? And I'd like to know why it is we can't have Eggs Benedict at our select board meetings on Monday night.
Because the masks get in the way. Very good.
All day breaks down.
Hearing nothing more on the special town meeting warrant discussion, we'll now move on to the humanitarian awards discussion. For the board's benefit, Tina, you're familiar with this. This was a, an idea conceived by a former chairman and select board member, Mark Aronian, who wanted to bring forth during the season of giving, if I recall correctly, last November, the notion that as representatives of our fair town, we come in contact frequently with individuals who go above and beyond in terms of servicing their community through the notion of the three Cs, compassion, caring. What was the last one?
I'm going to say kindness.
Consideration of others?
Caring ways towards others, consideration of others, compassion for others. Thank you, Mark, for emailing me those.
Yes. This was a very, very nice idea a year ago. I think it really grounds a lot of people to know that we should be able to step back and find these individuals who are not seeking our recognition and sometimes are found, hard to find. But when you do recognize them, they are immensely grateful. Last year's ceremony up at Upper Town Hall was brief, poignant, and meaningful. I remember all three of them were very touched, extraordinary stories. And I think we should celebrate that during the season of Thanksgiving. I'm announcing this tonight, that would, I'd like to try it again this year. That would mean each of us have to nominate and bring forth one person each. And I'd like to make the announcement of who we would like to nominate sometime in November. Do we have a date, Travis? I know you have a couple of dates out of cycle, right?
If we do it before November 18th, both the awards ceremony, that would be ideal, and is that what you're saying?
Is it the 18th of Monday?
No, it is not. It's a Wednesday. So the 17th.
We had discussed the actual giving the award would be on the 16th of November.
Would that work?
Yeah, absolutely.
So then, we could announce who they were November 2nd or November 9th.
We'll do the 9th.
9th, okay.
Will you, when you have a minute, just read who is eligible? I think that's in the information Mark sent to you.
Who is eligible? I will have to email you that information.
I'll get to it. I'm just paging through all of these gifts to the fire department. There's just so many.
Well, he's taken his 10 minutes to do that.
Ben, how much is in that gift account? I guess I.
I can find it. So he didn't send it to you all over the place?
Enough to buy us all Eggs Benedict.
There we go. Okay. Sorry, chief.
You're a good sport.
He is. He comes up every once in a while.
He has no choice. He's the only target in this room.
Is it not in the pack? Oh, here it is.
I don't think I did have that information, but I can get that to you.
No, we just have the email.
So what I do have here also is a picture of a citation that was coordinated through Rep. Dykema's office, signed by the Speaker of the House, which is very nice. And I reached out to her as well to let her know that your choices would be forthcoming, and she'll make sure that, to accommodate your request. And I will get you that information on who is eligible based on the three Cs.
And Travis, I'll have you work with Chief Cassidy on the logistics. If this needs to be a virtual meeting, that's fine. If there's some comfort level in having it again at Upper Town Hall, so be it. I don't recall a large assembly last year. I believe it was relatively small between the immediate family members and so forth. But we can work out either way, for sure. It's all about recognition.
I can be a little more specific. What I'm specifically wanting to know is whether or not the person can be employed by the town, whether or not the person must be a volunteer, it must be a resident of the town. I'm 99.9% sure that was in there. But the big question in my mind is whether or not the individual can be employed by the town.
Okay. Alright, so you'll forward that along to the board members, Travis? Thank you. And so folks should, if they haven't already got somebody in mind, and I encourage you, Ben, talk to the person ahead of time. It shouldn't necessarily be a surprise, but.
I thought you were going to say, like, go outside or something like that.
The person I brought forth last year was just like, "What? What's this?" I mean, they don't, these are the kinds of people who.
Don't see it coming.
Yeah, they just, they just do good things all the time. And they're the very best of us, so. Alright, moving on. Mr. Hearn, ambulance billing.
I'm going to bring the chief up here. I think this is something that's been discussed by previous boards, so I just want to make sure that the information's available to you, sort of a where we are, where we've been sort of conversation from the chief? You, okay, positioned?
Chair gets in the way. Not the chair, but the one I'm in. Yes, thank you. So just to bring you back to how we got to where we are tonight, there was a comment made at a finance team meeting with regards to outstanding ambulance receivables, which prompted us going down the path to reviewing our policy for collecting outstanding accounts receivable for our ambulance. When the department started billing for ambulance services years ago, it was put into a revolving fund. And for several decades, the ambulance operated out of that revolving account several years ago. Because costs were exceeding what was available in the revolving account and/or the accounts received for appropriation, the decision was made to transition the ambulance into a full municipal department operating off of the general revenue of the town and no longer revolving or receipts reserved for appropriation. And therefore, we do track the revenue that comes in, but we don't necessarily break even in terms of cost of service versus what we see for revenues. And so as we, this past fall into winter, saw the closure of the previous billing company, this was a time for us to go out and seek a new billing company, which we did receive. And one of the questions that came up as the treasurer and I met with the representative of the new billing company was, "What's our policy on outstanding balances?" And so that feeds right into the discussion about outstanding accounts receivable. And so we talked to the new billing company about what their experience has been with other municipalities, and it's all over the board. Some issue three invoices and then send to a collection agency. Some do three and then a last and final notice, and then send to a collection agency. Some don't use a collection agency, as has been our practice for the time that we have been billing. So this would be a significant change for us programmatically if we were to implement turning outstanding accounts over to a collection agency. And so after meeting with the treasurer, after meeting with the town administrator, after looking at different policies from different departments, I have a three-part recommendation this evening. First one would be for us to write off the outstanding accounts receivable prior to fiscal year '19. That's roughly 10 years' worth of accounts receivable totaling almost $46,000. The second would be for us to send a last and final notice for outstanding balances from FY '19 and '20. And then the third thing would be for us to engage the services of a collection agency for 2020 forward. And then, I'm open for questions.
How much is still open, '19 and '20?
73.6 from '19 and 140 from '20.
Thousand or just dollars?
Thousand.
And my, my other question here is, as you're talking about the three bills, what is the frequency, I'm missing it. Is it going to be like every 30 days there'd be a bill?
Thirty days.
Okay. That's all, that's only the only question, sorry.
Tina?
Yes, so the hardship form provided?
Yes.
Will there be like criteria in order to qualify for hardship? Okay. And for the time in which we are in the emergency state with the pandemic, can CARES funds be used to cover an individual? Similar to the rent and mortgage relief, is there such a program for people who are needing assistance in that way for emergency care?
There would not be through us. Again, there may be other agencies or programs. Again, Community Action Fund would be option, but it's not CARES funding.
Okay. Would the hardship form direct the individual to places they could seek assistance?
It doesn't normally. The hardship form would be very similar to when a resident would seek an abatement from the assessors. It just basically says, "This is our situation and this is why." It doesn't really say, "If this doesn't work out for you, try it somewhere else."
Okay. And you presented, when this first came forward to the board, you presented the return rate on using a collection agency. It was not huge, but it was not also zero. Was it around 30%? So when these bills go out to a collection agency, you see collections of around 30% of the amount. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Which, again, 30% is better than the zero that we're getting right now. But historically, you know, some of the years outstanding, you know, 2013, our outstanding amount is only $896, whereas 2012, it's $8,871. So some years, we were much better at getting all of our accounts receivable paid up, and others are still outstanding.
And you mentioned why FY '19 and '20 were higher amounts in terms of uncollected ambulance fees. You gave an explanation for what it, for the reason why that was so much higher. It had something to do with a change within the insurance system that.
So there were changes to the Medicare reimbursement rates, but there also concurrently was us changing the billing company. So when the billing company ceased to exist back in November, they no longer are sending a invoice showing outstanding balances. So sometimes people need a reminder of what they still owe. So that's where some of those uncollected balances are coming from, is that there isn't somebody dogging those outstanding accounts right now.
Where does FY '19 end up, though? So prior to FY '19, they're going to be just written off. FY '19 and '20, they're going to receive a last and final. FY '20 forward. FY 20 forward is going to be sent to a collection agency. What happens to FY 19?
So we have the ability, depending on what success we have from our internal notices, that if we've gotten a collection agency and we've engaged their services, then we can turn them any balance that we want.
Okay. All right.
But what we're looking for was saying absolutely from this point forward that we would be.
I understand.
I don't have any questions. I actually spoke to Travis about this earlier today. This is a matter that came before us months ago and gave me great pause, given the financial scope. And I'm now comfortable that the internal stakeholders have reviewed the status of these uncollectibles. I've read the policy, chief. It looks pretty good. I don't really have any questions going forward. I'll entertain a motion at this point to, are we gonna approve the forgiveness or the policy? How do you want to approach?
I would take a vote on both.
You want to vote on both? Mike, would you help me conjure the language for the forgiveness angle? This would be the collectibles prior to FY 19.
So we would be looking to write off the outstanding ambulance receivables for services prior to fiscal year 19.
Which began on July 1st, 2018.
Correct.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to forgive all, any and all ambulance receivables prior to...
Point of order? We're not forgiving it. We are taking it off of our books. So again, if an insurance settlement comes in, if an estate is settling their accounts, if, so we're not, we'll still take the money.
Okay, 'cause it...
We're not recognizing it as receivables and accounting exercise.
Let's parse some words for a second, because write-off, to me, seems like forgiving. But you're saying write-off is removed from books.
We're not carrying it as an expectation that we might still see it.
So there's some parsing.
It's off the balance sheet. It's taken off as an asset.
Forgiveness comes with the forbearance, with the hardship form for current and future. This writing off merely means that we're not carrying it on our balance sheet, saying that we could possibly...
So I'll entertain a motion to remove from our balance sheet receivables relative to outstanding ambulance services prior to July 1st, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, actually.
Actually, could I, I'll make that motion with a question?
Please, go. You got it.
So does this have, like, so since it does have an accounting implication, is this gonna have, is there any like audit implications or financial? Like, I mean, because just given the size of it, I think it's, I mean, I can't imagine there would be, but I just wanted to make sure that we're...
He's shaking his head no.
We roped the accountant into the conversation when we were, the town administrator, the treasurer and myself, and we were discussing policy implications.
Yes.
And she assured us that this action would not have a deleterious effect on any of our internal or external reviews.
Okay. Okay.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second, to adopt the ambulance receivable policy as detailed in the ambulance billing draft before us this evening. This includes a seven-point bulletin describing the payment, the hardships, and who the policy applies to. Do I have a motion to accept this proposed policy?
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
They're just, I'm trying to find, just make sure that the language is about timing, to make sure that it's not... So second with a question, where is the, is there any language in the policy to indicate the timing of notifications?
Notifications to whom?
The invoices. The invoices to the individuals.
Yes, 7.2.1?
7.2, okay.
And to... Bottom. See it, Ben?
Total three attempts to collect.
Were you asking specifically to say when Bill 1 goes out versus Bill 2, Bill 3?
Well, I just kind of want to make sure that there's language in there. I see that this, I just want to make sure that if we're putting in language in there, obviously, we're aging these accounts. But I just want to make sure that we're, that there's language in there, so that way, like, a future, like, that it's specific to say that the bills are gonna go out in a certain period of time. So that way, they're not like, it could just be extended to say four over, like, four years, as opposed to four over four months. I just want to make sure that there's specific language to that effect.
Yeah, and I guess, Chief, you correct me if I'm wrong, that's sort of how we're managing our third party, to make sure that they're doing it based on our sort of criteria. Do you feel like that needs to be in here, or can that be done through our management of our third-party vendor?
I think that can be done through the management of our existing relationship.
All right, that's fine. Then I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you have your approval of the policy, chief.
Great. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Makes you wonder, though, if someone does pay an ambulance bill from FY 16, does it go right into the gift fund now with this policy, or does it?
Yeah, it's a good question, too.
No, you have to approve all of his gifts, so you would have to...
No, it just wouldn't have a receivable to go against. It'd probably just come in.
Next on our busy agenda this evening is the EDA, EDA status application. Mr. Hearn?
Yeah, so this is another one that has sort of been discussed by previous boards. So the way I'm gonna approach it tonight, especially as we're at 9:15, is just to give you some background information. Take any questions you may have and probably bring it back to you in the future. I did have a conversation with the EDC. I believe it was last week. My weeks are blending together. And again, they've had some turnover in their personnel, so I don't think I provided enough background to them, so I'll do that to you as well. The EDA status is a poorly-named grouping, which is economically distressed area. I know everybody wants to say Holliston is not an economically distressed area, but if you look at the lists of communities that have attained EDA status, it is the Newtons and the Marbleheads and communities that are, in no way, should be described as economically distressed. It's just a poorly-named grouping. So I would say to that, the next point is that, why would you want to go for an EDA designation? The EDA designation, and obviously has a pretty lax way to get in if Newton is in it, is that the EDA designation gets you access to certain things, such as brownfield tax credits and also funding through groups like Mass Development. A group like Mass Development, and this is where the Nine Green Street conversation from earlier comes in, is gonna look at a project like that, say, sure, it certainly hits all of the boxes that we want to see in terms of, is this a project that would impact your downtown? Would it impact the businesses downtown, those types of things, by adding something to that area? But then they're gonna ask, do you have EDA status? And the answer for Holliston has been historically, no. So some of the information that I have here, I gave you a draft of a letter that I could put forth based on the information. Obviously, what we're looking at is census tract data that is not just specific to Holliston, is how, if you are gonna wonder how we could be eligible, that would be my simplest answer to that question. The other information that I provided to you is just a background on the EDA from Tallerman's Group, which was put together by Jay Tallerman and Alexander Castro. And that just sort of goes through the process. I can also provide sort of the background on the, on how the data sort of makes us eligible, as it would with other communities on that list, as well as the impressive list that goes with the communities that are, you know, listed here. I've highlighted the ones that are sort of almost absurd to consider them economically distressed. The last point I would just make is, I had one more point. I apologize. Yeah, so what I would say, this came to our attention through the group that owns the property across from our solar field, and that is going to be a private development of a solar field. And what they were essentially saying was that they would love to be, they would love to have a EDA status, because then they could pursue brownfield tax credits. That is not necessarily something that would benefit the town, although there could be a benefit if they start to pay a pilot on a property that was previously paying very, or nothing in taxes. So there is a benefit there. At the same point, the way that I wanted to look at this was to sort of say, by looking, by going through our assessor's office, by going through the planner downstairs, you know, what are the benefits potentially to pursuing this in a larger scale for all of the census tracts or part of the census tracts that cover Holliston? If you look at the census tract that covers that particular property, there are no other town-owned properties that could sort of benefit from this. If you look at other census tracts, you're looking now at properties like Nine Green Street, which if it had EDA status, we could then pursue Mass Development or other grants. Or another property such as Axon Cross, which is currently not owned by the town like Nine Green Street is. But again, whether it be the town or a private entity in the future would then have access to brownfield tax credits and other things of that nature. Now, I think one thing to stipulate also is that you can access brownfield tax credits if you are a super-fund site, but if you are not a super-fund site, this is the way that you get brownfield tax credits without being a super-fund site, but also sort of getting that benefit is to pursue EDA status. So then the last point I would just make, and then I can answer any questions or bring back information in the future, since we're getting late, is the question that I think a lot of people want to answer when you say, all right, I don't want to be in an economically distressed area, is we reached out to the other communities through the assessor's office to essentially say, did you see any negative benefit to your home values, to your business values, that all of a sudden we're in an EDA status area? And the response that we got was sort of, I don't know when we became, when we got EDA status, and it had absolutely no impact once they started to look into when it happened. So there is no real benefit, I mean, there is no real impact to it from when it comes to property values. And again, the impact, the reason behind that, it seems to be, is because EDA is just a poorly-named program. But again, it's something that this board would need to be comfortable with and be prepared to explain. So at that point, I think I would just turn it over to questions, and I can obviously bring it back in the future.
Any questions? My only question is, is this something that, once you are designated an EDA, do you have to re-up, or is it just something, it's perpetual?
There is no process that I see through the EACC to have to re-up on a consistent basis. We would be applying to the EACC, and then we would sort of have access to that for those census tracts.
Okay, so once approved, we would, there would just be, that would be it?
That's how I read it.
Okay. That's all I got.
Why haven't we sought EDA status before?
I believe it was a conversation that prior boards have had. And I think, so I brought this to the EDC, our Economic Development Committee. And one of the things, I didn't, I don't think I realized that there was turnover, because my understanding was that they had, they had sort of had these conversations previously, but I think it was a different sort of mix of people at the time. And so I didn't really give them enough background. But I think that a previous select board has had this conversation before. I think it's worth kicking the tires on, and if we don't want to do it, it's fine. I just think, the conversation came to us through a private entity, and by doing my due diligence on it, I see benefits to the town for a property that we own in Nine Green Street and another property that we would like to see, whether it's through our involvement or not, which is Axon Cross, and some other things of that nature, that we can help move along some of those things in the right direction.
Yeah, I think it's just what we're, if there were stumbling blocks with prior considerations for EDA status, what were they? I'd just like to know what they were, if there were any. There may not have been. That's why I asked the question.
Anyone else?
No, I mean, I think there's a lot more to understand. Like, I'd like to know what would have us qualify for Nine Green Street and what would have us qualify for Axon Cross. Of the categories here that they have as qualifying, which ones would you see? We don't have to get into that tonight, though. I'm curious about that, because I went through this and...
Well, so it wouldn't be specific to the project. What we would do is apply for the census tracts that they're in, and then they would, they would be within an EDA status census tract. And then when I go to Mass Development and say, we have Nine Green Street, here's a project that we want to pursue. Mass Development could then essentially, there would be nothing standing between me and that particular revenue source, that grant funding source, right? Same thing for brownfield. Let's say if somebody wanted to pursue Axon Cross, they would then have access.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I think there's a lot more. I'll have, I'll need to learn on my own to understand all of what you just said there. But I'm not opposed upfront with the idea. I agree that the name is not pleasant. But I think we can all move beyond that.
At this point, you said you had not, the EDC, our EDC has not embraced this yet. Do you want to get them to embrace and vote on it? Come back to us?
Absolutely. So I'll go to them, I think, November 10th. And then if they're not on board at that point, I'll let you know. But if they are, I'll bring it back to you. Does that sound good?
Great. Sidebar, real quick, it just occurred to me, speaking of EDC, are we all square with the language that Rep. Dykema's office needed for the final?
You approved it. I gave it to David Melly in Rep. Dykema's office. They're doing their thing. There's nothing else for us to do at the moment.
Great, okay.
Just one final quick question about this. Would this would only apply to certain census tracts or wouldn't apply to the entire community, correct?
Right, unless we do all census tracts that the community has, which I think three census tracts may cover the majority of the town.
Yep.
My focus was making sure that the Nine Green Street tract, the Axon Cross tract, were included in here.
Yep.
But I can double-check sort of any areas that were left out, or if we'd want to leave out.
Because I guess the only question that would be, like, if we did say, like, we only did tracts, and then we wanted to go back to do, add other tracts, say hypothetically, for, because of the, for some reason, that kind of might put us in a different position as opposed to just doing everything. I don't know.
So the way that Tallerman's Group wrote up the process that they've seen in pursuing EDA status is that it's kind of like, you can apply, if they say no, you just apply again. You change, you know, you sort of take a different approach, kind of thing. There's multiple ways to apply for it.
Okay.
So I would say that I don't think that it would prohibit us, but I will double-check that we would still be in good standing if we wanted to add more space or another tract. The way that I think, if you look at the map, and I can send all this information as well as I get ready for the EDC to view it again, is I think that these three census tracts would cover the majority of the town.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right, so you have our blessing to go to the EDC and bring it back, okay?
Sounds good.
Let's move on to some board business. If I could ask our clerk to get us into the appointment for a Holliston Cable Access TV term. Mr. John Drohan. Do you have that, Ben?
Yep. Hold on. Sure. So I would like to make a motion to reappoint John Drohan to the, what is the exact language here for?
Cable Access TV.
To the, for, to the Cable Access TV.
Three-year term. I have a motion to appoint Mr. Drohan to that. Do you have a second?
Second. Excuse me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next one?
So we have an appointment. I'll make a motion to make an appointment of Paul Gion, apologies about the pronunciation if that's incorrect, to bonded, to be bonded constable for the town.
For a three-year term. Do I have a, so that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That carries. Meeting minutes, Ben?
Okay. I will make a, do you want to do them all at once, or do you want to do one at a time?
Yeah.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 9th, 2020, and the meetings minutes of September 29th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That carries. Next one? Fire Department gifts?
Oh. All right.
We have three in there.
There are three. We'll do one at a time. So I make a motion to approve a $200 gift to the fire gift account from a Fieldstone Drive resident in appreciation for service to the community, and the gift is unrestricted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Next one?
The next one, I will make a motion to accept a gift of $50 to the fire gift account from a South Street resident in memory of a former Norfolk Street resident, and this gift is unrestricted.
I have a motion to approve that gift of $50. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And the last one, Ben?
I will make a motion to accept a gift in the amount of $100 to the fire gift account from Mohawk Path residents in appreciation for a birthday parade, and this gift is unrestricted.
I have a motion for a $100 gift. Do I have a second?
Second. Second, excuse me.
I thought you had something else. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That carries. Great. Okay, moving on. Green Community Annual Report. Travis, is there an action item here?
So this is, the Select Board has historically approved the annual report being submitted. This is due the first week in November. Thank you to Chris Mayo for staying on top of this particular grant program, who has completed this and is ready to submit it, but is just looking for board approval.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Green Community Annual Report.
So moved, as it is 100% complete. Look at that. That's a lot of activity. So moved, as it is one hundred percent complete, look at that, that's a lot of activity, make that motion.
I will second that with an appreciation to Chris Mayo for doing all the work on it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. The next item is a designation of agricultural preservation restriction for Thistle Dew Farm. Any details on that, Ben, you want to read?
This is, if you don't mind, I'll do the backup on it, unless you'd like to, Ben?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll follow you.
Just give you a little history here, so this was Article Six, October two thousand nineteen Town Meeting. That was under the CPC article, and there was, excuse me, one second. For a total of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring an agricultural preservation restriction on the Thistle Dew Farm. So that was what that was, what they're asking for now, we've been reached out to by Ashley Davies, the APR Acquisition Planner. Essentially, what they're asking for is to stay in compliance with the MGL here, is just to have a notice and a public announcement that we are sort of staying on track. The notice to proceed with the acquisition that was done in a public meeting, so they're just asking for you to vote, to keep this on track with the previous Town Meeting article. And so once you, if you were to vote on the notice of proposed acquisition, then I will sign this and send it back and keep them on track to fulfill that previous article.
So you want a motion for a notice of proposed acquisition?
Yes, to approve the notice of proposed acquisition.
I will make a motion to approve the notice of proposed acquisition for the agricultural restriction, for the Charles Nickerson land.
Thistle Dew Farm, correct?
Thistle Dew Farm, yeah, so the agricultural preservation restriction for Thistle Dew Farm.
I have a motion, have a second?
I second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That carries.
Thank you.
Special Town Meeting warrant reopen, we had discussed possibly reopening that during a date certain. Do you have something to report to us, Mr. Ahern?
So the vote, the vote that you previously took kept the warrant open through October first at four o'clock. I would ask that you vote to, based on the new Town Meeting date of December fifth, that you keep the warrant open through October thirtieth at noon. That will allow me to stay on schedule and bring to that next Monday you with a final warrant to, for review.
I have a motion to keep the warrant open for the special town meeting until October thirtieth at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Noon.
Noon, would be great.
Noon, excuse me, did you say noon?
It gives me an hour between then and town closing.
So it would be open as of right now?
It would be open now, yeah.
Opened now?
Then I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's approved. The last item, recognition of promotion of Rear Admiral Derek Trink. We were notified by Steve Bradford, a veteran's agent, that, Steve Bradford, Commander of the Holliston American Legion Post Forty-seven, Holliston native, Derek Trink has been promoted to Rear Admiral, lower half. He grew up here in Holliston, his parents still live here on Goulding, I actually know his mom pretty good, she stops by all the time. His accomplishments with the certificate, Rear Admiral, lower half is the rank of one star, and it's quite notable. He's a lifelong Navy man, and now he's an admiral, so another local Holliston man makes good, we'd like to recognize that. He would be so kind, do you have a certificate for him?
We have two copies, if you could sign one of each, we'll get one to him and one to his parents.
Outstanding, thanks so much. Other business, Mr. Sparrow?
I have no other business.
Ms. Hein?
No, I have no other business.
The only item I wanted to bring to folks' attention is relative to an incident that occurred this morning. We were made aware of a motor vehicle accident involving a pedestrian very early this morning. The circumstances involved, what appears to be a delivery person being hit on Route sixteen, Washington, up near Highland Street.
No, on near Locust Street, the other side.
Okay, I'm just looking for it, hold on one second. Chief gave us a brief update, here it is, right here. Here it is, sorry. Preliminary investigations suggest the motor vehicle was traveling west on Washington Street and pulled over to the side of the road to deliver a package. A passenger from the vehicle crossed over Route sixteen, Washington, on foot. Upon his return trip back to his vehicle, the passenger was subsequently struck by a motor vehicle traveling eastbound on Washington Street. The pedestrian then fell into the westbound lane of travel, where he was subsequently struck for a second time by a different vehicle. The operator of the first vehicle traveling eastbound did not stop the crash scene. Vehicle was described as a white SUV-type vehicle with four doors. Holliston Police are interested in following up on any information relative to the first vehicle which left the scene. Motors traveling in the area during the time of the crash, six twenty-four AM this morning, are asked to call Holliston Police at five oh eight, four two nine, one two one two, with any information that they may have observed. So that is it for this evening, any other comments from the Zoom call? We have a few stragglers still out there. Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that calls it for this evening, thanks so much, folks, for tuning in, we'll catch you next week. Good night.